You're ready.
I will call to order our meeting for Tuesday, August 15th, 2017. And we'll start with flags lit. I.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Beck?
Here.
Commissioner Kirby?
Here.
Commissioner Cord?
Here.
Commissioner Partey?
Here.
Commissioner Sarian?
Here.
Vice Chair Finlay?
I'm here.
And Chair Higueret absent.
Okay, number three on our agenda is public comment. And so, this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the planning commission on a topic that is not on our agenda this evening. So if anybody would like to do that, step up and sing the other one as interested. We'll move on to item four, which is meeting minutes. And what are the chances we can approve Januaries?
Belinda's not here, so no action.
Kick that one down. How about subitem B, our May? How come we have that repeated?
Oops, sorry. That should be... The minutes are right in the packet.
So are we just approving May?
It should be May and June.
And June, okay.
But is May not in there, or June not in there?
No, you said May twice instead of May and then June. It was a typo.
Okay, we have to do May and then we'll push June off to the next meeting.
We can do both tonight.
Oh, is it both? Are both in there?
Oh, maybe not.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, there is, okay.
We have a chance to review them.
We just have to change the agenda.
Wait, just the agenda has a little typo. And I think we have everybody that we would need.
You do.
Okay, so, does anybody have any changes that need to be made to, let's start with the May minutes? Does anybody have any comments or changes to the May 16 minutes? No one has any changes. Do I have a motion? Or let's, well, can we do them both in one motion, maybe?
Alan cannot vote on May and Commissioner Cord cannot vote on June.
Okay, well then, let's have a, do we have a motion for approving the minutes for the May meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the May meeting.
As submitted?
As submitted.
All right, second?
I second.
And so, do you have that, Juliana?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None?
And so, the correction is, is you would be approving the June 27 special meeting meeting minutes.
Okay, so, do I have any comments or corrections for those minutes from anyone? And here we go, there are none. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the June 27 minutes as submitted.
Special meeting minutes, okay.
I second.
Do we have second from Tucson? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? Got those off the list. Item five is our cannabis industry zoning amendment. We have just for, just for the people know, we're going to have three separate items tonight, and we'll deal with each of them separately regarding the cannabis ordinance. So the first one is cannabis industry zoning amendment. And Juliana?
All right. So, we received comments from the city attorney's office. So this is a very similar staff report that you would have seen in June. The addition of the ordinance reviews is on page 16 of your agenda packets. And then attachment one is the zoning amendments for 18.91. And so, in the red would be what was recommended by the city attorney as well as yourselves. So one of the things we did was in 18.91.030 land use table, we added, we took away the word expressly prohibited and added a comma saying unless specifically addressed in the specific, in a specific plan. So what was recommended was the removal of the PD zoning from the matrix table that said permitted and conditional use. And then John Kenny basically recommended since you have oversight over those special plans, that unless a special plan expressly allows it, then you can do it that way. So that way, it kind of takes over what the conundrum was last time about, you know, not communicating to people that it's permitted in a planned development zoning, but then a specific plan says it's not permitted. So I believe you had brought that up, Vice Chair Finlay. So that language there on page 17 addresses that issue. So what it means is, for example, the Roseburg property would have to go back through and amend its specific plan that's already there for that PD zoning to expressly talk about cannabis, so. The next, so again, for page 18, so the matrix table, what we did is we opened up the C2 zoning as allowed with transportation as conditional use permit because it is a larger facility and it doesn't really fit the allowable spaces that are there. So the biggest thing was that we took out the PD zoning. So page 19, you'll see that we took out the footnotes and that was a recommendation by the city attorney. He recommended that the nonvolatile and volatile move to section 18.91.040, the definitions. And so you'll see that those volatile and nonvolatile definitions were added in there. And that also specifies more exactly what we're considering volatile chemicals. So that was brought up by the public comment last time. So we wanted to aim to take away any gray area with those to make sure that we're expressly prohibiting what we want. So in the end, the other thing too, the not permitted for onsite retail to the public, they recommended us taking that out because it was ambiguous, but then we clearly state in the retail license that you need a retail license to have retail, so we took care of that. We're being a little too redundant. The rest of the changes were basically just some grammatical clarifications. And that was pretty much it for the zoning amendments and everything like that. And so to let you guys know from additionally personal experience dealing with people now who are interested in coming to the city of Mount Chasta for cannabis industry uses, a lot of them who are looking at cultivation and product manufacturing are still having a very hard time finding space in the city limits. So one of the state statutes is that you can't be within 600 feet of any public or private school that has onsite instruction for kindergarten or 1 through 12. Excuse me. And then we found out that doing the spatial analysis, there is a school in the middle of the employment center area that's on the south side of town, so about, I think it's about a dozen parcels have been disqualified from being eligible for any cannabis activity. It's unfortunate, but that's basically what the state mandate is and we can't lift that.
Wait, sorry. Can you repeat the state mandate? What was it?
So the definition in the state mandate basically says a school is defined as a public or private institution that has onsite instruction for kindergarten or 1 through 12. A school, something would not be considered a school if it does not have that onsite instruction. So for example, Golden Eagle, for some of their grades, they come in and get their materials and then they go home. That would not be considered a school. But what is considered a school is like an elementary school where kids spend all day there. So that's the state's mandate.
So what's the space around it?
600 feet. So that takes out a majority of those parcels there. So there has been a discussion that even though we have opened up the C2 zoning, there isn't a lot of available real estate still with that 600-foot diameter. If the previous commissioners remember, I think this was before Commissioners Sarian and Kirby were with us, we were looking at our medical cannabis dispensary ordinance and one of the things we were playing with were different buffer amounts. And 500 was something we kind of sat on. It didn't take away too many of the parcels that would be eligible for dispensaries at that time. And so I went back in and applied the 600-foot. 100 feet makes a huge difference. So we're taking out a lot of real estate for those individuals. I don't have that map for you today, but I just made that up today while doing some spatial analysis. And so it's something to consider moving forward, whether you want to keep the current matrix or allow for opening up into C1 zoning. And so, one thing we could do with C1 zoning is we could open up cannabis industries as a permitted use. And then within the licenses and standards and the restricted areas, not allow those industries within the downtown enhancement district, which would keep cannabis industries outside of the downtown area, which I think is the concern that we had for C1 downtown commercial. So that's one thing to think about as we move forward, but otherwise, if you're comfortable with the ordinance that's in front of you, I would recommend approving for transmission to the city council.
I have a question. In our initial discussion, some...
A little farther back.
I can't win. Some months back, we were playing with, I want to say 200, but this was regarding dispensaries, not this ordinance. We were talking about 250 feet amending it. I think, if I remember right, Emily was uneasy about that, but Belinda was the one that suggested it and we had discussed it. So what changed to eliminate that topic of discussion?
Yeah, so within the new regulations approved through Prop 64 and then the medical cannabis suite that was before that, that mandated in the health and safety code that it's 600 feet. So we can choose to prescribe, to be more prescriptive, which means we can extend it to 700 or 800, but we can't go less restrictive. So that's, that's an unfortunate mandate.
And if that was, if it was only used for growing medicinal, that still...
It now covers all forms of cannabis, including all of the levels of industry.
All right, thank you.
Can I assume the 600-foot measurement is taken from property line?
Correct.
I think my recommendation was 500 at that point, because then the state actually is more stringent.
Yep.
Do we have any kind of, you know how the dispensaries are kind of limited to three for, in the city limits? Do we have any kind of number of, you know, businesses that can come in and...
We do for when we get to item seven in the cannabis industry licenses and standards, we said that we would like, and that can change as well, five cultivation permits will be opened, five food-based manufacturing permits will be opened, and five nonvolatile manufacturer permits will be opened. And then in the ordinance, we, this will be something I'll introduce then, is that distribution facilities, testing facilities, and nurseries, because they are so large and we have so few parcels, that there is no permit restriction for those. They have to get a permit with us, but there's no maximum number. That makes sense. But we'll talk about that at seven, but that is a way to limit the number of establishments within your city if you don't want to use the zoning prescriptively.
Okay.
Okay, and on the topic, if we were to make a change in how we treat the C1, you don't think we should do that now? Were you talking about changing that in the future, or is that something that we would want to hash out now?
I think I would recommend you discussing it now. It's a problem that I'm already seeing right now, to the point where I feel like it's going to be very difficult for a lot of industry to come in to do that, even the number of permits we have open. I haven't gotten that many people to fill those five permits for each sector. I've maybe got two or three. And a common thing that I've been hearing is that they're going to have to build a facility in a vacant parcel and they're not able to do that at this time. Now, that's not necessarily our issue to deal with, but the other thing they had also talked about is now that we know that that school's in that employment center area, all of the employment center zoning is pretty much out the window because that school touches all of those. The only other employment center we have is on the north side of town, which is north of Spring Hill, and that does not have adequate water to facilitate any industry up there. That's something we've been working on. We're pursuing grants for upgrading the infrastructure up there, but as far as putting anything up there, that's really not an option.
Couldn't a prospective business choose to drill their own well, or would that not be permitted by our city ordinances?
Well, we could have that discussion. We've had that discussion with a few other people that they could drill a well until city services are up there. The city ordinance states that if you're within 500 feet of city lines, you have to go on to the system. And because we don't have water lines, we could offer that to a developer. And then basically say, you know, once it is within 500 feet, we usually write an agreement that within 12 months they connect and they pay for that connection. I don't know if that'll be out the door for people up there, but we'll see. Again, it's just something to contemplate now. If you don't want to add it, that is perfectly up to you guys.
Wait, so to clarify, we're talking about changing the zoning downtown?
You gotta go.
Sorry, we're talking about changing the actual, like, zoning, the actual...
What I had brought up is, yeah, on page 18 in the matrix...
Adding zoning.
Basically, turning the C1 into more like the C2 in the employment center to allow some cultivation, to allow some product manufacturing. And again, it is up to your purview how you'd like to do that or if you would like to do that at this time.
So you want to turn C1 into C2?
Or something similar. Or, you know how we have conditional use for product manufacturing and small-scale growers? Possibly turning into that, turning that into a permitted use as opposed to a conditional.
Is that the only copy of the zoning map we have? Is this one?
Yeah, I think we have, Josh has one. Unfortunately, I did not print some for you, I'm sorry. I will add that to my list of things.
No, I'm very spatial. I was thinking, I want to see, you know, that 600-foot buffer and all of that would be helpful.
Juliana, is there any information on what is typically sought after in terms of a site for manufacturing of this kind?
Yeah, I can give you a general overview from what people have been asking me, is most people are looking for a 5,000 to 10,000 square foot open space. So one of the things is 1119 REEM, that larger building that has the CrossFit in it right now. A lot of people have been looking at that space as an ideal space because it has the roll-down doors, it's a more industrial facility. The unfortunate thing with that is that's within the 600-foot buffer and the perfect building just died. So that's kind of what people are looking for. So the other thing I've heard is some people have been looking at purchasing some of the auto shops because of the bay doors, the higher ceilings, more open space so that they can come in and put in the equipment that they need. So similar to a light manufacturing facility.
I don't, I don't, in my mind, I don't have the map to look at right now, but in my mind, there's not, it's right. There's not a lot of properties within, even within C1 that meet that standard. And then, at least initially, my, I don't necessarily favor opening up C1 for manufacturing either, so.
Okay.
Anyway, you...
It was just a food for thought that I've just noticed. But again, whatever you guys decide, you know, we can always come back and review within a year or so.
Well, in my opinion at least, light, even light manufacturing is a perimeter use. You know, whatever it is. Not just, you know, if it's cannabis or not. But just because of land values and just typical development patterns. So I don't want to rush into that one.
Okay.
But effectively, if we, by eliminating downtown and considering the 600-foot buffer, by adding C1, I don't know that we'd be adding very much.
You'd basically...
It's basically the south end of town.
Yeah, you'd basically be adding parcels on the south side of town on South Mount Chasta Boulevard. Yeah, because a lot of the schools, and I'll, if you want to also wait on this another month, that's perfectly fine. It's in the timeline for some wiggle room. I can bring in a bigger map with the 600-foot buffers as well.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
That seems to me, again, that's how my brain works, is to see it mapped out and really see the impact, so we can chew on potential structures or, you know, what people could do and where it might be appropriate.
I think it's looking like, no matter what, that people are going to probably have to do ground up and build a building. That's what it's, what it's looking like at this point because there's so few options. But I think it also is imperative for us to move forward regardless, so that way we're in place, so when those people do decide they want to come here and manufacture or cultivate or whatever, we have the ordinances in place to do that so we can take advantage of the tax revenues from it. Just my opinion.
Well, again, so for the information of the commission, the city council does want to move forward with some tax measures, but they're going to do it in the general election in 2018. So the taxes aren't going to be in place for a while. And the other thing too is, again, you're still on schedule for approval by 2018. So again, I'd rather, you know, I understand your point, but I also want to assure you that I want you to do a good job. And if you need maps, I can do that for you.
Okay, how are we? Are we, any other discussion around this before I open this up to public participation?
It does look like there's a number of larger parcels that would begin to do this, sorry, on West Lake, off of West Lake. Is there a school down there near West Lake that we're...
Yeah, there's the elementary school.
Elementary school. It's across from Barb's house.
You know, the little white...
Oh, the little school?
Yeah, the Little White School.
That's over there, further.
It's right behind Rite Aid.
Yep.
Okay.
And actually, that 600-foot buffer cuts off the parcels that have the shopping center on it. So that 600 buffer reaches all the way over to the other side of Lake Street.
Does it include the, what we would call Perko's? I don't know what they call it now.
Something like Spears?
It's the restaurant that never sees...
Yes, it does include that one. The cursed, I heard it's called the cursed restaurant.
It is.
So, yeah. Unfortunately, we did, I did look at that one and that one is in the buffer because they do it from property line to property line. And that property that it's on has like one tiny corner in the buffer.
And what about an actual building within the shopping center?
Same thing. That shopping center parcel is quite large and so just a tiny corner of it is touching one of the...
It eliminates the whole thing, you mean?
Correct. And so one of the things some people have also brought up to me about the buffers is they ask me if they can do a boundary line adjustment so that if they give away that property with the buffer in it and shorten theirs to just outside the buffer, technically that would work. That would be legal. So you might see a lot of people moving lines like this to move out, and that's an administrative permit, so. So you, it, people are getting really creative to make this work.
And so the state law is written specifically towards property lines on...
Yep. Not building, but property line.
Or they could subdivide a property...
Correct.
To make that work. Interesting.
Yeah, so we might see an interesting shift in properties too, so that might be, whether it's a positive or negative consequence of what we do.
Okay, anybody else before we let the public weigh in on this? I mean, it sounds like we're going towards revisiting this next month, but...
It sounds that way.
So in the meantime, if anybody in the public, I want to open this up, and if anybody would like to come and speak to the item we have right now, you're welcome to come on up.
Elizabeth Tabor, Mount Chasta Patients Collective, as you know. And it's interesting that we brought up the shopping center and the buffers because looking around the city, since it allows a dispensary to have an additional license, we were toying with that idea. And so, the building we're currently in is zoned C2, which everything's fine, but to find an alternate location to do, whether it's, you know, you know, food product or cultivation product to do seed to shelf, we couldn't find anything within this zone that would be available right now without, you know, building or constructing. So I was the one that went over to the shopping center because the dugout, that building for years, they said it's been cursed. And I said, "Yeah, for restaurants, but not maybe a dispensary right on and off the freeway." And, you know, I had this big, thought it would be beautiful parking and all that. Well, lo and behold, 600 feet straight over is the little school back there, which, you know, when you're just looking at it, you think, "Oh, that's far enough," but it, but it's not. So there is kind of a zoning...
Conundrum.
Conundrum, yes, absolutely. Because, you know, we were wanting to invest more in the city and part, you know, be part of the city even more. So the zoning is really kind of, have been difficult for us, as well as to expand, you know, what we do here. Secondly, I found out with the shopping center also, the company that purchased the shopping center has a loan on the shopping center. So loans are secured by FDIC. So they wouldn't be able to lease to anyone in the cannabis industry because their lender would not be happy with that because of the FDIC too. So even with our conundrum with zoning, there's also people that maybe want to lease to a cannabis industry person, and if they have loans and this and that on their properties, that's also has just recently come up. So we're trying to not bother Juliana too much because she's so busy and we really, the ordinances and the work that you guys have put into this are incredible and everything's just really right on T. But if there's some way that she can check with the state, if there is a way to maybe change those buffers or zonings, or if the state says, "Look, you know, we say 600, but if it's in within your city, you're small and you can change that, yes," but I was just hoping there's a way that maybe we could investigate that a little bit more and see if we can make all this work somehow. But other than that, you guys are doing a fantastic job and we thank you.
All right, good, thank you. Anybody else?
Hey, I just have a...
Can you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Andrew Strack.
And you're from?
From here. Been here for seven years.
Address?
My address? Actually, actually, I'm incorporated. I'm just up over in the cloud. But, so I'm a local. One thing, and speaking of locals, is my comment, and I haven't heard too much of this, is there anything in place or discussion to encourage local businesses and people that have been here to get preferential treatment in the application process or to help them get permits as opposed to people from Los Angeles or wherever? Basically, I'm trying to see if there's any trepidation towards carpetbaggers coming in and making money when there are a lot of locals that have been here for a long time that are excited for this opportunity.
So one of the things we do is it's three different ordinances. So right now, we're just talking about the zoning part of it, but we're also going to get into the licenses and standards. So just to let you know, that's coming up.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make, to put that on the table too, to put that seed in the minds of locals first.
That brings up a question from me, Juliana.
Wait, hang on. Anybody else? Do you want to speak? Okay, good. We're going to close the public and put...
So is this about the zoning or the licenses?
Well, just about what he brought up. You know, as far as the, as the licenses go, is it, do you know if it's going to be like first come, first served or an application?
So we'll cover that in the next items. One at a time.
So we'll stick with zoning and hold on to my question.
Okay.
Okay.
So what I have so far is maps with the 600-foot buffer for the next meeting. Is that all that you had requested?
Right, and so if you could, yeah, stick that on top of our zoning map.
Correct.
With, ooh, can we do zones and a pair of photo and...
Actually, we do have the plotter printer now, so I can do like 36 by whatever you want now. I can get very large maps.
It'd be nice to see, you know, if we had a PDF we could zoom in on, you know, on our computers at home, maybe.
I don't think 18 by 24 is usable.
What?
I don't think anything 18 by 24 is usable at a table.
Oh, yeah. But I mean, but we can.
Right. So we could have, yeah, so we could have it so we could look at it and kind of see what buildings are there and help us.
So it'll be a PDF version in your next month's packet and then I can bring at least one or two large versions to share on the two tables. It'll be bigger than that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I think that sounds helpful. So do I have consensus then that we're going to push this off to our next meeting and we'll have more information and decide how we're going to tackle it, if it sounds like C1 and potentially changing how we approach C1 and potentially excluding the downtown? Is that kind of where we're going with this?
Okay.
Do we have consensus on that?
I, I do want to, I don't know, if there is a way of doing this, but I want to echo what Elizabeth said in terms of, it seems like if there were significant barriers, like if there was a river between you and the cannabis shop over there and I'm the school, that might, maybe there's nothing, maybe it's extremely clear, but if it's, if there's a variance or something like that, I'd like to know about it.
Yeah, so for your, for the record, I did call the Cannabis Bureau. Unfortunately, they are not. I asked them if there are going to be any exemptions for small cities written into the law, or if there's going to be any procedures for exemptions with small cities, because it's not just the city of Mount Chasta that would have issues. So looking at the other cities, they would have issues as well with the 600 feet. And they said right now, they're not looking at that because they won't be issuing licenses until 2018, so they're not going to be changing any other procedures until after they get through that hurdle.
Okay.
So the soonest we would probably see exemptions to that rule, from what I heard, is probably 2019. But again, things may change.
And what is the likelihood of an...
And what is the likelihood of an exemption? I mean, are they likely to grant an exemption for a city like ours?
Well, right now, the only exemption they grant is if it is a cannabis-related industry that also has an elder care or medical-based facility in it as well. That can be within the six hundred feet. So, and that includes manufacturing, cultivation, distribution, but they have to have a medical elder by their definition, which I don't know what that quite is yet, I was doing a lot of this today. Um, but yeah, I don't know what the likelihood of an exemption to a state law would be. But I asked because that doesn't hurt.
Right, because I think that point is well made because we do have, you know, for us, a barrier, you know, a big street and it's, but, you know, I don't.
One other thing, uh, schools, uh, you mentioned the description of what they are, they're, they can be charter schools, they can be anything like that. Early on in the charter process, there were a number of schools that I was involved in that kind of opened up willy-nilly. That doesn't qualify, just.
Uh, so again, it depends on if they have onsite instruction is basically how they look at it. Is so, for example, Golden Eagle is set up that people can come in, get their books, get like a slight lesson and then they go home. That is not considered a school. So some charters could be fine, so like I said, the school that's in the industrials area is the I Am School. So they are considered a school because I've called them and they said they have onsite instruction regardless of the number of kids. Um, that, that's what the defining factor is and that was decided on the state.
And so if, if somebody did open up a facility and within six hundred feet, somebody wanted to establish a school, that's a pre-existing use sort of thing?
So that would be a grandfather use, correct.
Okay.
Uh, the state does not have any provisions in that area for grandfathered uses, so I would consider a grandfather use.
Do we have, I don't know if the I Am building is rented or owned?
It's owned. Believe me, I tried looking at every loophole.
I can't think of any schools in, I mean, Gold, Golden Eagles is your example, but they also have an onsite program that kids come to, so I can't think of any schools that don't have an onsite program in city limits.
Yeah.
So pretty much all schools.
Yeah.
Do, um, preschools fall into that?
Preschools do not. Daycares and preschools do not, unless you would like to add that to your ordinances.
They, they change too often, potentially.
That was our concern with the smoking ordinance is that they potentially change too often, but then the two that we were looking at haven't changed in like twenty-five years. But it, somebody can open a daycare potentially in their home and then it's there. So that was our concern with the smoking ordinance.
And the fact that they don't have to sign like everyone else, they could have a very private-looking business, which is what we encourage for residential home-based businesses, so that was the other issue there. But anyway, so it sounds like you're deferring to the next meeting.
I think so, I think we have consensus on it. I just have one more question though about the non-volatile, I'm, because I don't, I remember that that came up in terms of.
Sure.
Allowing some kind of like degrees of volatility in terms of the manufacturing process and so I, I'm just wondering, I'm assuming that you met sort of his request by changing this, or how did that work?
Oh, I clarified this, so the state of California, so what I did is, uh, the definition non-volatile is on page twenty-one and it means any substance that's not volatile in nature. So what I did is I also added volatile solvent to be very clear on page twenty-two. And so the state and how they do their licensing, if you're non-volatile or volatile, this is the definition they use, which is, um, any solvent that is or produces a flammable gas or vapor that when present in the air in sufficient quantities will create explosive or ignitable mixtures. Examples of volatile solvents include but are not limited to butane, hexane, propane and ethanol. So unless you would like to start offering volatile solvent manufacturing, we can't add any of these, like ethanol is the alcohol that he was talking about. You know, it is definitely lower on the volatile scale, but again, the way the state looks at it for their licensing is it's, it's a volatile nature mixture because it, it could be flammable. So I, um, so I did bring this up with our city attorney and therefore the same thing is I would not recommend putting some but not others of the chemicals into the manufacturing sector because then you would have to go with just a plain manufacturing product license and then that's not very clear anymore. Um, and then that way you're having people apply to the state for non-volatile as well as volatile licenses and so that also sends a slightly different message than I think was originally intended. But again, it is up to your purview if you want to try and do something creative, I can attempt that, that system.
I, I recall him saying that, that whatever substance he was using, it was a very, very small amount.
Yep. The state doesn't differentiate between amounts or not because when you order those, they be, they come in larger quantities and then you have to store them onsite. And so that's what the state is looking at, is not only what you're using, even if it is in small quantities, but it's also what you're storing for the process. And again, even if it is a small quantity, they, again, you have to get OSHA standards and, I mean, for example, I've worked with OSHA a number of times and it doesn't matter how much of an acid that you're around, you have to do the same procedure for any acid. So that's kind of how the state's looking at it for safety precautions. Um, I would advise you to think of it the same way. Is, if you are comfortable with the alcohol ethanol aspect, um, you can do that, but that would mean opening up volatile manufacturing as a whole. Which you can do, that is your option.
And do you have a sense of how important that is? I mean, in terms of the industry, if that's a significant share of what is manufacturing?
Um, from my limited knowledge, I have only had two people asking about the alcohol and volatile manufacturing, but I have had other people say that they'd like to do like water pressing and other types of pressure-based methods. Um, kind of similar to cold pressing is my understanding. Um, but again, not in the industry, so I could be totally wrong about that. But I have some people say that that non-volatile product manufacturing is not an issue. So it depends.
So it doesn't sound like that would be a big obstacle for the industry.
I haven't heard anything, but again.
Or do you know, are you guys on this?
Well, are you, what do you, I'm not sure I understand what you just asked, I guess.
So by, by prohibiting volatile, the use of volatiles in manufacturing, I'm just wondering if that is a significant obstacle to manufacture if we.
In other words, it would deter people, is that what you're saying?
Potentially, right. But that's, but that's an important.
Personally, I don't think so, I think other people would disagree with me. But I.
I think it's whomever you ask, some people are very provoked.
The only issue is, uh, that one fellow brought up a pretty good point, is some people make tinctures and tonics that are alcohol-based and alcohol is considered a volatile substance. But with, with volatile, when Josh and I and Juliana were working on it, we, we were more talking about, you know, high pressure, heat, butane, which is when you hear, I don't know if you remember the fire in Dunsmere a couple of months back? Uh, I'm pretty sure that was butane-related. And what that is, is it's, uh, the same thing that you put in your cigarette lighter and your Zippo lighter and there's a way to extract using that, using high pressure. And if you have on a, a sweater and you touch somebody and it makes a spark, you could literally blow yourself up. Or maybe not blow yourself up like a grenade blow yourself up, but likes, like, uh, like on your gas stove.
We do allow other restaurants and such like that have, uh, propane or butane and different things like that in our, in our, in the city.
I don't think anybody uses butane, but propane.
Propane anyway.
Yeah.
And that's as dangerous, maybe it's not, I don't know. I wonder if we're treating it, uh, equally?
The reason behind that, when we were having the discussion, was we were trying to protect, uh, residences that were in proximity to these facilities.
The other thing too is, um, the volatile solutions are usually placed under high pressure, which changes the way that you're using the propane. So again.
Higher, not the kind of high pressure, just in the tanks that we use.
No, yeah, it's way higher than that. Yeah. So that's why it's slightly different.
It's not like cooking with propane.
Yeah, it's not like cooking with propane.
Is it like cooking with gas?
Oh, I, and I apologize, I did notice, um, one other thing I forgot to bring up with the Planning Commission. On page twenty-three, um, it was brought up last time about personal gardens and so I had amended the personal garden tags to include special setbacks because we were talking about using the setbacks of the, each individual zone. And so what I did is, uh, I, I put in that the setbacks for a personal garden are explicit, um, in that subsection B there, that's in there. So that kind of helps with the issuer coming up, if someone in a commercial area gets a, a personal garden, they'll still have to abide by these setbacks as opposed to the zero setbacks in commercial.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, well that, um, commissioners, how, are we, do we have enough information to send Juliana back to make us some maps?
Um, let me ask one question about the section you were just talking about for these setbacks.
Yeah.
Located out of public view, um, that means like from a public sidewalk kind of a thing?
Correct. That one's not read, I apologize for not having that looking like the other changes, but I had written that and then John Kenny, I put his edits in there and I forgot that he was okay with that.
So then a fence would be required to obscure it, okay.
Yeah, you can put a fence up as long as it's not within the public view, which is an appropriate legal term we can use.
Okay, anyone else?
Um, so they, so people can grow out, outdoors, is that, you know?
For personal use, yes.
For personal use they can, but not for commercial.
Correct.
That needs to be in greenhouse.
Correct. And personal use is, uh, well-defined in that ordinance as no more than six plants.
Anyone else? Okay, then I, Juliana, do you have enough information?
I am good to you.
Bring back to us next month?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Uh, not before we, are, what are the other cities in Siskiyou County doing, if anything, or do you have any idea?
So I've heard on the grapevine that weed is now starting to consider the industry, uh, different industry sectors, I don't know where they are on that. And then, um, my understanding is I got into contact with Dunsmere because they were holding a cannabis town hall the same time we were, which I did not know. Um, and my understanding is Dunsmere is also re, um, are, are opening back up their dispensary as well as industry ordinances. I know that they might be relaxing the personal gardens as well, um, for residents. They have a pretty restrictive person, no personal garden policy right now. Um, that's what I've heard, I haven't seen anything as far as language and I know that weed has passed a medical dispensary ordinance or they're pretty much about to. Um, the dispensary one I know is the farthest along, but, uh, like I said, on the grapevine, I've only heard bits and pieces of that, those two jurisdictions are interested. The county is, has put a one-year prohibition on cannabis, they were leaning towards doing some pilot programming, but my understanding now is they're going to be waiting a year to see how it flushes out in the other cities. As well as the state. And I have no news on Wyrika.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, thank you. Are we good? Then let's move on to item six, the cannabis retail license and standards ordinance.
All right. So again, John Kenny was the one who pretty much ripped this one apart and I think last time we really didn't have any, uh, concrete changes that I had seen, this is pretty straightforward. Um, one thing that John Kenny had recommended taking out is the entire five point seven zero point zero three zero restricted locations. He just said not to put it in there in case the state does change their radius, then we'd have to go in and change our ordinance. So he said just leave it out because they have to abide by state regulation anyway. So, uh, he had recommended not having that. Moving on to page twenty-six, um, the cannabis retail operation may sell, transfer or assign. Um, that was contradictory to some other language that we had in the ordinance, so John Kenny had recommended that be taken out, um, which I agree. So basically what it means is if any dispensary chooses to move locations, they'll have to reapply for a license. So that's how that works. Um, other than that, really, the only other thing he had recommended is on page twenty-eight, he recommended taking out the specific Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act and putting in, uh, the generic state regulations, which again, helps us out there. And then the other language he had had is the inspection and enforcement and responsibilities on thirty-one. Um, he had me put in some languages agreed upon in five point seven zero point zero seven zero. So basically I have to have a sheet in the application that the business owner signs, basically saying that the city is allowed to inspect and ticket them in case of infractions. So just some legal, um, jargon to make sure that if someone does violate the ordinance, we are able to enforce it. It's basically what it is. Other than that.
So that's part of the application process, is that what you said, they'll sign something that allows that?
Correct. They have to basically allow the city to enforce, inspect, things like that. Uh, we do still have to notice some that's legal. Um, one thing I didn't do that didn't come into my mind until Monday was I did not bring you guys any delivery options. So I know last time you had talked about wanting to know what the new ordinances and regulations on deliveries were to, to see if you wanted to do that. Um, I apologize, I forgot to do that on top of everything else. So if you want to wait another month on this one, that's all right and I can bring you those delivery strategies and I've made myself a very good note about that. So other than that, um, very straightforward, really no other changes besides some numbering and grammatical things that John Kenny's office had wanted. And so to answer the question that was earlier about the public comment, the retail licenses, so right now the city of Mount Chasta only has retail um, and all three dispensaries will be allowed, um, they will be allowed to apply, reapply for their licenses first. So the only way that we would open up any more retail licenses is if one of the dispensaries decides to not reopen. So they have that choice. So basically we are giving the local dispensaries the priority for these ones. That makes.
I wanted to, uh, mention something, I don't know if this is the point in the discussion, but I think it is. Personally, um, the, the third dispensary has yet to activate their business. So they're, we're basically not deriving any taxes from them because they're not doing any business. So they're, they've kind of frozen that third permit. So I don't know if we have it included in our ordinance for going forward, but we ought to put a time limit on.
It's ninety days.
Ninety days, you've got to get, got to move forward with doing something.
And for the record, so basically what it is, is once you receive, how, how it works for us is we get a qualified applicant, we, um, close, we, so sorry, let me start from the beginning. This, this is the same way for the cannabis industry licenses, so I'll, I'll kind of go through the whole process. So what we do is we open the application process, we get applications through that period and we take a look and make sure everyone has everything in their application. And once they do that, we consider them a qualified applicant, then we put them on the qualified applicant stack on the top. Once we close the deadline for applications, we'll then take a look at that, um, stack and if their application meets all of our check marks and everything that we have outlined in these ordinances, then we offer them the license. So that's how we go through that process. Um, once they get a license, basically their license is conditioned. So it says you have a license, but you're not allowed to operate until we receive these things. And it's usually an inspection of your security system, the state licensing language and, and a copy of that, um, and then whatever else we notice. So for example, if we notice on someone's site plan that they need to amend like a doorway, we won't hold up their license for that, we'll just condition that for their operation. Similar to a conditional use permit. Um, and so what that does is it puts it on the, the retail or industry owner to do those improvements. So what our new ordinance will say for both the industry and retail is that after you get that letter from us saying you have the license, you have ninety days to do all of that. So you have ninety days to schedule your security review, you have ninety days to get your papers from the state. Now that's going to be, um, lifted, at least for the first six months of twenty eighteen, just because the state is going to take a while to issue those licenses. And, uh, I have talked with the bureau, what they're going to be doing is they'll be issuing letters saying, uh, you're conditionally approved to operate until we can review your application at the state level, because you've passed the local, we're going to allow you to start operating. I'm going to consider that letter, the state's okay, and then what I'll do is I'll put a note in their file of when that expires and then I'll recheck with the state whether they were approved or not. So that's how we're going to do at least the first year of this because it is a transitionary period. But basically in the future, what'll happen is, um, they have ninety days to get all those things and that's it. If they don't get those within ninety days, the license goes back into the cycle, we go to the qualified applicant list and we give it to the next eligible person. And then they have ninety days to get operating. So that's how we've set that up. Um, that was a recommendation by the city attorney.
Okay, so commissioners, are there any other questions about this one? Okay, so commissioners, are there any other questions about this one? Alan, you want to start?
Page 33, right, right off the bat. I'm just curious, what's the difference between a cultivator and a nursery?
So 33 is item, is the next item. We're just on retail right now.
Then I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Tisal?
I go.
No, I don't.
Nope.
Yes, question?
No, no question.
Sure.
Uh, just a brief one. One, I, is it safe to assume that, and I guess throughout all three ordinances, that they're pretty, the definitions are pretty standardized or something?
Yep. So we have language in both of the license and standards. So 5.70.020 definitions, that's also in the cannabis industry ordinance. And it basically says the definition in ordinance code section 18.91.040 are incorporated herein as fully set forth and are applicable to this chapter. So basically, all of the terms are the same.
Okay. And those are standardized throughout the state of California?
Correct. I took just the state regulation. I think there's only two or three that we, the subcommittee amended a little bit to be a little bit more clear. I believe STEMS was one of the, like, they were just certain things that just needed to be a little bit more plain English that we did. So.
And then I just had a question on page 30, letter M. It says each dispensary owner shall establish minimum training standards for all employees. And I look at that as an employer and I think, that's pretty vague.
Yeah, that is a state regulation. And so it's something they want the local jurisdictions to have on record as well.
And minimum means minimum?
No idea. It basically just means this is how we put together our employee things. I, I really don't know what to expect. So that is in the state regulation and the state is, they're not requiring, but it's quote unquote, highly suggested that local jurisdictions also keep employee handbooks on file. It's helpful for enforcement as far as police department in case something were to happen. So for example, a dispensary gets robbed. We under, and then we go in and we see that like the door wasn't forced, or it was. And it kind of helps us knowing the way that they train employees to lock up at night. Or it helps us with, you know, what are the procedures to access cash because they are a cash business? Or what are the procedures with the cannabis itself? If you're packaging or if you're distributing, you know? It, it does help us as a city in the long run for enforcement purposes. Because if it's an employee stealing, there's obviously going to be certain signs. And if we know how these procedures work, it could help us towards that. I think that's the general idea. I'm not in enforcement and I'm not at the state side, so not quite sure, so.
So we have to have this booklet or they have to have this?
We have to keep something on file about what their training techniques are for, you know, handling money, cannabis.
They prepare and give us or they?
They prepare and give us.
I think the state's probably going to come up with some sort of minimum of, you know, how you check ID and blah, blah, blah.
You might want to ask a dispensary owner that because I am not sure.
We'll get there when.
When they get there.
She was responding to his question.
It's just better if you don't respond unless you're up here talking to the mic. So, hold on to that one. Yeah, I just wondered because like I say, when there is a minimum training standard, you know, depending, sometimes you just get a minimum. But if the goal is we want to know about their security requirements or we, our goal, it just seems like it's more useful to spell out what the goals of this request are as opposed to minimum training. Minimum training is a dress code and that's it, potentially.
Yeah.
That would be very minimal. We expect you to wear, not wear shorts. And that could be the training.
Correct. Again, it's same language from the state level.
So they don't wear shorts.
They just highly recommend that we also require it for local records.
So as getting our, potentially our goals of security standards and things like that is not something we would want to put in there, so that we would have useful information?
If you would like to add it, please feel free to add it. I don't, I would not be upset if you did.
You'd be upset.
I, again, when I look at something and it just seems like it's just taking up space and not having like.
You can take it out too if you really want to. I mean, nothing is mandating us to have that in our local ordinance. It was just something that, it's in a state regulation. The state had said, you know, it might be helpful to keep copies onsite of training procedures.
Is, can we just have in this say a space holder to put something else like C such and such? And then a way of?
No, I think that's going to be similar to the 600-foot buffer because sections in those state regulations also change. The only one that really doesn't is like I said, the definition of schools is pretty codified in, in the health and safety code. I, I would caution against using the section, but I mean, I can pass it by John Kenny, city attorney.
Okay.
It's up to you guys if you'd like to put that in. I, I'm really not partial either way.
I don't see a need to remove it. I just personally, I would rather have something more meaningful. That, because if we're asking for minimum standards and we don't care if they wear shorts or whatever it is. These are the things we want to know about. We'd like to know what your security procedure, what, you know, security procedures, money handling. That's what we actually are really interested in, so I think we should spell out. If, if those are the risks that we're trying to, and, and those are the goals. So, I don't know if any other commissioners, if that interests anybody. That would be, would be another plus.
I think if the dispensaries want the police to be able to help them, they're going to spell that out themselves. You know, if they want the city staff to be able to help them, it's pretty self-explanatory that they would implement those standards and then have them, have a, have a copy on file. But telling them you have to make these standards, I don't know. I mean, it's their, it's for their security. So it'd be to their benefit to have the standards.
Right. Well, I don't know if it is that evident, what they want. I guess it wasn't evident, completely evident to me and.
I would maybe recommend going into public comment, maybe hearing what.
Yeah.
Okay, second one, come on, Bob, come on here. All right. That, that's my only comment. So are we good?
Yes.
Public hearing part. If you have, if you'd like to comment, please come up.
So regarding what you brought up. Elizabeth Taber, Mount Shasta Patients Collective. If, in the ordinance, it also says that our employees will have to have uniforms. They have badges with their picture identifying where they work. The state requires us to have onsite security now, personnel.
On onsite security person?
Like a bouncer, basically.
It's actually is a security individual, which we've already, I've already employed. I try to be ahead of the game, yet behind it. We have a policy and procedure handbook that each employee has to read. And they have to sign and agree. My employees, I have taken them to Sonoma State University and we have attended classes together with doctors, physicians, nurses, pharmacologists to receive an education with cancer and cannabis, cannabinoids. Each of them are certified and have certificates hanging on our wall.
Let me interrupt for a second. That's great that you're doing all those things. What I'm more interested in is what you said at first. Which portions of those are state required?
All of those.
All of those are state required?
Absolutely.
Even the classes?
Well, they say training and that's, I'm, like I said, I've always been very, very into the medical. So that's part of the training that I want my employees to have.
If the, is the rest of it as loose as that? They shall have training? Or is it more concrete than that?
Well, also applying with the state or any other locations, you have to provide them with SOPs. So in those SOPs, we lay out what their training is, what their education is, what we require for them to even be employed there. They, each employee has to have a life scan.
Who, who is this turned into, to the state you said?
The state.
Can you also just explain what SOP means for the record?
Oh, standard operating procedures. I'm sorry. You have to turn in your standard operating procedures when you're applying to open in other locations. Mount Shasta could ask us to turn in. So not only would you have the employee policy, but you'd have the operating procedures. Chief Cross and Joe Restine. They've come in when I've chosen to upgrade my security, which the state actually requires how many pixels and how long my machine has to record. And I've already upgraded all that. So the police station has come in to look at my security, where it's located. I've taken the above standard, just like a bank. I actually have hidden panic alarms that send a direct silent alarm so they know not to come with alarms blaring. We have sensors that if someone tapped our glass, to break the glass, it'll set our alarms off. So really a lot of it falls on the responsibility of the dispensary owner, meeting the state requirements and going above board to secure that type of safety and procedures for your employees. They're at risk as well as of patient. So training is not just, you can't wear shorts to work. The training goes beyond that.
So it sounds like it is codified in the state requirement?
Yes.
That you provide the SOPs. And so it sounds to me like maybe that would be what we'd want to reference instead of the sort of minimum training.
Yeah, or we can turn in our employee handbook that they have to read, but.
No, I think it's more important that, that we recognize the state requirements in the, in the ordinance. And I don't even think we should necessarily receive all that information as a city. I think if it has to be turned into the state, it should be turned into the state and not have the city also handle that, unless it's necessary.
Well, it sounded like there might be some local law enforcement advantage to having access to that.
I'm not saying not give them access. I'm saying they shouldn't necessarily have to, the city shouldn't necessarily have to keep track of each of those unless they need it.
They already do have access.
And they have access.
For example, because on our street, we're the ones with the higher quality and all the external cameras. There's been car accidents, thefts. Shasta County was coming up looking for a suspect that they knew was in our town. They've come in, I've zip-drived, I've given them information and helped them with their cases numerous times. So law enforcement is very aware of where our security is, how long it runs, what it can provide, and how it not only helps us but the community. So they are aware of that.
So for the two arguments, so one of the things you can do, you can take it out. You don't have to require us to have that onsite as part of their application to us. I think one of the things too, from what you're hearing from the dispensary owner, is having a copy of that when we're going through the applications might show that these individuals have thought through this process. So you could add the language as outlined in state application or state regulations if you, if you would like to. Or you could just take it out if you feel that you don't want to give us too much documentation.
It's the language in M about the, each dispensary shall establish it. I'd like that tied to the state requirement somehow instead.
Right. It might be interesting to have Parrish Wayman on this also. If, if the goal is to provide him information, I would want to know what he actually wants.
Okay, I can get that. And I'll give the time back to the public comment, just to clarify.
I just had a quick question because you kind of asked and then went over it. Are you going to bring up or discuss or consider delivery again or?
I, I have it in my notes here because it sounds like that was something Juliana didn't get, wasn't able to provide for us for this meeting. So this may be another reason to kick this one back and give you time to work on deliveries and to work on the security and training piece.
Okay, good. Because new things have arrived. I used to be like not so much for delivery, but the way things have changed and issues that come up, I'm kind of changed my opinion on that and really would like to openly discuss it when that comes up again.
And so you're in favor of delivery?
Locally, as long as it's within the city limits. I've had too many patients calling in, having surgeries, going out of town, small children, children can't come in, can't you deliver? Maybe we could consider it on a medical side, but maybe not deliver maybe recreationally. So you don't have some guy calling from a hotel room wanting a delivery. But maybe if it's only medicinal with certain special circumstances, not to sound funny. I mean, we don't have liquor stores that deliver, but on a medicinal end maybe, I don't know.
Pharmacies that deliver?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
All of them do.
Yeah. So that's just some new things that have come up. You know, some people with children, they can't come in and I'm like, I'm sorry, I'm having surgery. I'm going to be down for three weeks. I don't want to take Norco. And I'm like, wow, I'm kind of in a pickle. I don't know how to help you. They have a caregiver situation, but their family lives in Sacramento. So there's just some new things maybe we could talk about and consider at a later date, possibly.
Okay, so that would be another thing for us to consider if that's something we want to talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come and speak on this ordinance?
I apologize if this has been talked about already, but just.
Could you identify yourself again?
Oh, again, yeah, Andrew Strack. The, the land use permit of being up to 10,000 square feet, I'm just wondering how, if that is what the impetus was behind that? When the state allows up to an acre for outdoor and basically banning on outdoor and especially that land like by Les Schwab, all that area is potentially, could be used for just outdoor without greenhouse or larger than 10,000 square feet.
So that was the last item.
Oh, that's okay.
That, that was the last item.
Sorry for jumping the gun.
And if you want, I can give you my card and you can send me all your questions or I can answer that one.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I don't want to hold you up. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
The next item will be cannabis industry licenses. So I think that's the one you want.
And anybody else would like to speak on this one? Okay, so we'll close the public comment part and commissioners, but. So Alan?
No, wait a second.
No.
So was my thinking that we would like to also postpone this and talk about delivery and?
Should we talk about delivery now since we know it's a subject? It just wasn't in there and go ahead and give direction on now? Or would you rather us wait until you?
Why don't you let me grab the state regulations and bring those to you, what they're bringing forward? And then I can do that. So just to recap, I've got delivery information and then the minimum training standards and clarifying with Chief Cross, some, some information as far as if that is needed.
Well, and tying it to the state.
And tying it to the state.
And do we want to tie it to the state application that they have to put in or the state regulation?
Both. The regulations require the application, so.
Right.
Okay, so commissioners, are we in agreement? We'll kick back for next month? All right, moving on to item number seven. The cannabis industry license and standards ordinance.
Okay, so a lot of the city attorney edits to this are exactly the same as the retail because the language is basically the same. So we've taken out the restricted locations. To assure you, the definitions are restated as the same as 18.91.040. And then the maximum number of licenses, I know last time we had talked about one business location. Sorry, page 33. Okay. And then I know last time we had talked about the maximum number of licenses at each location. My understanding from the last meeting, looking at the meeting minutes and the recording, that there wasn't really consensus as far as how many you'd like to have for each business location. If you do want to have a maximum number of licenses per, per location. So that's a discussion I would advise you to have. Again, the page 34, taking out the cannabis industry operations may sell, transfer was the same point. John Kenny said if they need to move locations, they should have to reapply for a license. The rest of it is similar. Page 36 is just removal of the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act language and putting in state regulations to keep it general. And again, having the same language on page 39 for the inspection and enforcement responsibilities, making sure that that as agreed upon in the application is in there. That was pretty much everything that got changed. The biggest thing with this one again is we clarified the volatile, non-volatile with item six. So we still only have the non-volatile in the licensing. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Hey, I have a question in, in response to the question about how, about local, like preference to locals, other than our existing medical dispensaries having first shot at the retail licenses. Is that our only deference to locals to get these licenses?
That's really the only legal language we can put in. So we can't prioritize one individual over another just because of their spatial location.
Now, there are instances where some states, in the RFP, my world, in the RFP process, you know, if you're, if you're local, you get a 10% kick or whatever for being from the, within the community limits. So I mean, there are instances in which that's. So, I mean, there are instances in which that's done. I don't actually think there makes sense in a lot of it.
What I?
This doesn't work for me.
Yeah. What I can do is I can ask John Kenny if there is any language that we can put in there. I'm not sure that any exists, but I will, I can ask for future.
Because isn't it basically who arrives first and gets you the information you're required or requested?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't see how within that framework we could favor anybody.
Yeah, I can't see any language, but if you really do want to prioritize that, I can, we can defer for one meeting and I can ask John Kenny if there's any language. I don't know of any because we do have to be fair in that process. The only way around that is with, like I said, the retail licenses, they're grandfathered uses. So, because we have no industry right now, it's.
So, do you know if there's any sort of trend in, you know, certain organizations just kind of getting in line in every community around the area so that the next license that comes up?
I, you know.
It's, you know.
I have heard of other, one of the individuals who came to the town hall was from Los Angeles. They actually did come up for our town hall as well as Dunsborough's.
Can we disallow people from LA maybe?
Again, I don't know of any provision that would allow you to discriminate based on spatial location. I can ask John Kenny if that's something you do want to prioritize. But I don't believe that you can do that. You do have to show equal opportunity to individuals.
Well, there's sometimes there are incentives or disincentives, you know.
Like streamlining.
Right, streamlining or like a percent difference in licensing fee or?
Well, technically, we can't do that with the fees. The fees I do know is codified, we have to have one fee for all individuals applying.
Well, okay. The one I'm more concerned about is that, you know, if a lot of, if somebody is getting in line all over the place. I don't necessarily need it to be somebody local, but I don't, you know, I don't want the, whatever that it would be. I don't want Walmart growing the cannabis here in town, you know.
We don't want, well, for instance, there are municipalities that disallow chain restaurants. And so.
Successfully.
And they're able to keep out a chain, you know, but pick a chain, whatever. And so, maybe that's kind of where we're going to, not have a chain.
City of Ashland for decades kept, you know, things like McDonald's and Burger King and stuff like that out of the city limits. I don't, I think they've since gotten in, but I think it's because the sphere grew around them as opposed to.
My initial feelings to that is that is not a legally standing ordinance. Because again, it's very difficult to discriminate a non-highly regulated industry. So, cannabis is highly regulated, which is why you can set a number of maximum permits. You can apply a lot more rules as far as you can apply like the big box ordinance that you guys have. You can do things like that where you can restrict how people develop, which does end up doing what
Right.
you're recommending. As far as this argument right now, as far as keeping chains or regional entities out of it, I.
You know, we don't want some larger entity monopolizing this industry and making other people have trouble that are locals from having access.
Well, I think the last time we had discussed, what we put in for like the monopolizing of the licenses is that one location can't have more than a certain type of licenses or more than a certain number of licenses. So, we've, that's how we've kind of tried to get away from that, but.
Even the size of the buildings, the size of the facility, I think would help, like you said.
Yeah.
I think that will do some.
There are other mechanisms that limit an industry. As far as again, having local preference, I don't think you can do it, but again, I can ask John Kenny. There's no hurt in asking him as far as what his professional opinion is.
How do you define that even though? Like, you're a local, you've lived here for five years, you know, how is that, how do you define that, like?
I mean, the other, the other argument I could see coming from the city council if this were to go to them is that as an economic development factor, locals aren't going to have as much capital as maybe a large industry coming in from Redding or Shasta Lake or someone coming from Los Angeles. And so, if we're prioritizing, yeah, if we're prioritizing jobs and successful economy, then limiting to locals would be a negative in that, that sort of way. So, playing devil's advocate to it, that's, I think, an argument you would get from the city council and I don't necessarily know if that would fly. But again, if you would like to prioritize it, I can ask.
We can't build a wall, we can't.
No, no, and I think it's a worthwhile conversation.
Yeah.
We're having now about, you know, how can we support local industry and outside dollars? Bringing outside money in is lovely.
Okay, I have a question that I started to ask before I was supposed to. Cultivator and nursery, what's, when you're cultivating plants, you're growing them, is what's it? Am I misunderstanding something?
So, the definitions are in 18.91, and so, a nursery is one that is allowed to do seeds and starts only. Cultivation is allowed to take those seeds and starts and foster them into a finalized plant product.
This is a, then the only thing is, I'm going to ask for a Harvard comma in 5.80030A after manufacturing. Food-based production comma, non-volatile product manufacturing, add the comma.
I'm really surprised I missed that because I love Oxford commas.
Is it not Harvard, is it Oxford?
It does need a comma, they're agreeing.
Okay, yeah.
I don't want an Oxford comma.
You can call it whatever comma you want. Usually, I'm really good about that, I like those as well, so.
Okay, then that's it for me.
So, let's say a dispensary could have two licenses if they wanted, the industry licenses.
In addition to their retail.
In addition to their dispensary. But their location may prohibit it at their particular location where they are.
Correct. Due to size or available parking or ability to bring a truck in, things like that. Yeah.
Okay. That's it for now.
I would add on to that, if they wanted to get another license, their site wasn't suitable for that license and they needed to move and they had to reapply for that license, are they still first in line?
Depends. So, there is nothing stopping an individual from, once we pass all of these things, there's nothing stopping an individual from what we call being waitlisted. So, what the waitlist procedure does, excuse me. What the waitlist procedure does is it allows someone who's interested to put in an application and then basically, once a license comes up, then they'll go through the procedure. We don't have to have a time limit for that waitlist at all. Anyone can submit an application at that time. And then what we do is every year, we would contact them and say, would you like to renew your waitlist status? And they say yes or no. And they can sit on that waitlist as long as they want, as long as they keep doing the annual renewal. And so, what that does is if one of our dispensaries, for example, does want to move and someone has put on the waitlist, the waitlist comes first. So, there's really no way around that if we're not allowing people to transfer their licenses. And if we start allowing people to sell or transfer their licenses, then you have people never giving up a permit. I don't, I don't really see a legal way around that to prioritize the people who already have one. Like I said, I don't foresee that happening as far as with the retail because all of them are allowed that caveat of reapplying during this transition period. So, I'm not worried about that for at least this next year. But if one of them does decide to move, that could be something they have to.
In a sense, with an ordinance in place like this, couldn't, if it was rented property, couldn't the owner, the property that's being rented, just jack up the price because they know that the dispensary?
Correct. There's no way of stopping that one.
I don't like that.
So, yeah, I mean, that's the same situation. I mean, it's unfortunate, but.
Well, I understand that they can reapply, but I would think somehow that if they just wanted to move to a different building with, you know, that also meets the standards. I don't know, does anybody else have any concerns about that? I mean, I would think, I mean, if whoever's dispensary, you know, they get pushed, you know, the rent just goes up once the owner knows that they, their business is tied to their location.
Yeah, I mean, again, that's what we're seeing downtown. A lot of people are complaining of people are hiking up rents and so they can't afford anymore. That's why the bookstore, at least that's what I've heard from the bookstore, that's why they left.
That's the story.
It is difficult for us after a grandfathering procedure has been seen through. It's very difficult to prioritize one over the other. You can't show favoritism, even though that is an unfortunate but real circumstance. There's not anything the city can do to intervene for that unless we want to also do an additional rent cap. And that's a completely different process, it's a political nightmare.
I don't think we should necessarily do that, but, and I don't know how, they're not actually, having to get back in line when they've been in line, they've gotten their business, they've got it all set up. I don't know how that showing favoritism and letting them, you know, maybe they do their application again. Maybe they have to redo all their security stuff, but I want to move next door, across the street or whatever.
Yeah, it would be considered a completely new location and license. A really good example of this too is if any business moves from one building to another, we don't allow them to transfer their sign permit. They have to get a brand-new sign permit because they're at a new location, regardless of the size of the sign, whether they're doing any improvements.
I think that's quite a bit smaller than this, but I hear you.
It's the same general legal concept.
It's the same idea, okay.
But I can ask, I can ask John Kenny about that procedure and, but I have a feeling he's going to say, you know, this is probably the best one that you can do. Like I said, it's difficult.
Why do we have the waitlist?
So, the waitlist is for anyone who's just interested if another license will open up. So, for example, if someone hears that we're going to review the ordinance and want four rather than three licenses, people may start applying early and get on the waitlist.
Shouldn't it just be first serve or first come, first served?
It is, but people are given the option. So, if they did apply and they don't get a license, they can be sat on the waitlist because, for example, maybe the state doesn't give them a license. And so, those waitlisted people then want to stay in line. It's basically holding your place in line in case something happens to one of them.
I guess my point is the only way around not giving businesses that already have a business preference is doing away with a waitlist.
I can ask about that with John Kenny. That was his recommendation to Shasta Lake and I stole that.
To what?
The waitlist was a recommendation by John Kenny to Shasta Lake for their procedure. I kind of copied that, but I assume he's the same city attorney. It's good. But I can ask him about the waitlist and, you know, if that's something that's required or if that's something we should have. And that each time it's an application period and if you don't get chosen, you don't get chosen. And then each time we would have to open up a new.
Right, it's first come, first served every time one comes up.
Yeah, I can ask about that.
Right, or just, and if there is a way, you know, under the scenario that Alan described, it does seem a little harsh that an established business could lose their license because of a rental.
There is the similar provision for alcohol licenses as well. Alcohol licenses are tied to the location and the business. So, if the business moves, they do have to go through a reapplication process with ABC.
But are alcohol licenses limited?
Correct. They're limited by kind of sub-zip codes. I was trying to figure out how they do it. But I think we have like eight beer and wine licenses and then I think we have like three or four beer, liquor, wine.
I absolutely see the value in having people reapply for a new location because the new location could, you know, there's other, there's new caveats.
Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't reapply.
But, right, I think they should reapply, but having that waitlist and so someone could jump ahead of you because they've been sitting on a waitlist for five years.
What I'm hearing is you're trying to prioritize local current business owners having, having that.
Right, because if they've already demonstrated their complete compliance or their ordinances, they've got an established clientele, seems like that has value.
I will ask the question.
Okay.
I like the getting rid of the waitlist aspect. I think that's not a bad idea.
It seems like that's the only legally, like the only way that we can do it in legal parameters, I guess.
If the, if the opening would be triggered by someone going to move, they know, by golly, let's get on the waitlist. Or let's go apply.
Or let's get our stuff in on time.
Right.
Okay, anything else?
Anybody else have questions? So, again, I'm under the impression that we're going to kick this one off to next one.
PC?
Oh, does anybody, oh, yeah, public.
Public comment.
Public, hey, sorry, I didn't mean to give the public. Would anybody like to come and speak to us about the industry license ordinance?
You again.
Elizabeth Tabor, Mount Shasta Patients. I'm glad that she's going to check with John Kenny on that because I was invited to help educate the ad hoc committee in the city of Weed because they did make a medical cannabis ordinance for dispensaries and they are actually working on their cultivation license permits. And their city attorney has somehow with wording put that the applications are going to be accepted in a, from a certain demographic area. So, I, you know, I'm not as an attorney, but I know that their wording and their discussion at those meetings were that the applications were going to, it seems like they said something north of Costella? Is that a town?
Yeah.
Okay, Costella, I know the town, to, as far as north is such and such just because like Wyrica banned because the county put a moratorium. So, they want locals that have been around to have kind of this opportunity. So, maybe their city attorney could communicate how they've worded or found that out? I don't know. I'm not attorney, like I said, that was just the discussion that they had made on that issue. I think that's the only thing that triggered me was, yeah. And then John Kenny also spoke at the meeting in Dunsborough and they're working on ordinances and stuff as well. So, it's nice to see that the local cities are moving forward and wanting to do something with all this. And I'm tired, I lost my train of thought.
Okay, great, anyone else? All right, let's close it up. And of course, Ms. Juliana.
Can I say something?
What, oh.
I wanted to, I don't know if it's the time in the meeting to address his question that was out of turn.
Go ahead.
Which was why we put a limit of 10,000 square feet. That was kind of, of one of the, I was on the subcommittee and that was kind of, sort of, came from me. And that is with a very conservative county that we're in, the North County being very conservative, we wanted to optimize our chances for success. So, if we went full bore, full boat, jumped in with both feet and we failed, then everybody would go safe. And so, that, being conservative and cautious was the reason for that.
Okay, and so, the numbers of, I guess I did wonder, so we have this number of licenses, five of each type as a, and again.
Arbitrary.
It's an arbitrary number and did you look at like sort of, like what kind of capacity? Were you looking at our zones and the existing buildings and potential areas to build or?
That was the original thought process, was looking at what's available. And obviously, that one school cutting off those employment centers has definitely changed that. I think the other thing we chose that too is we wanted to offer at least a decent amount to give us a variety of a number of different individuals coming in. But the number, you know, is up to your discretion. If you want to go less, you can go less, if you would like to go more, you can go more.
Or less of one.
I would recommend trying to stay consistent across the board, but if you would like to have less of one over the other, I believe you can do that, as long as you have a good reason and state that while we're doing this, so.
I guess my concern is, you know, there's potential of 15 different locations for these businesses. And so, that's why I was, I'd rather see, you know, businesses have some kind of incentive to do more than one license. So, you know, there's, it could be a potential of just seven different locations.
I don't, yeah, I don't quite know how we would incentivize. I don't, yeah, I don't quite know how we would incentivize that besides kind of what comments have come up in the last meeting where there is an incentive to do kind of a top-down investment strategy where you have onsite, you know, what Elizabeth had brought up earlier is what we call seed to sale. There is some incentive to that because you're ensuring the product that you're doing, you have your own, it's kind of like brewing your own beer in your own bar. We do that in Wisconsin, that's the thing. But, and so you have your bar-specific beer. And so people will only come to your bar because it is that bar-specific beer. And so in a sense, there is a little bit of incentivization in that way so that, for example, if one of our dispensaries want to have their own specific type of cannabis that is unique only to them, they would have that ability. And that's, I guess, kind of answering your question, there's kind of a natural incentive to do that.
Sure.
So.
But could they, if they only have, wouldn't they have to have every license to do that?
No, not necessarily.
They go from cultivation to food-based or?
But then they can't sell.
But then they can't sell.
They could sell food-based.
Unless they're.
They, they could do, I believe we did amend it to allow them to have two in addition to their retail. So they could do.
So they can have a total of three.
So what they could do, for example, is a dispensary could come in with their retail license and do nursery and cultivation. So they would have their own, they could have their own patented seed variety brand and then they could have, sell starts of it in their, their establishment. And then they could do cultivation of it and sell the bud or, they could sell that final product to a product manufacturer. So they wouldn't be able to do the product manufacturing onsite, but they could have their own strain if they wanted to do that. So the other thing they could do is they could do cultivation and then they could do product manufacturing so they could cultivate some onsite. They could put it in their, their trademarked pot brownies for that dispensary and then they could sell it onsite.
I have a question, why are we limiting it to two? I realize I missed a meeting.
I think we had just talked about as part of the monopoly thing and I think we had talked about taking that provision out if you wanted. You could just keep them like any other business location.
Well, I kind of agree with Tucson where it's like 15 is a lot on top of the three dispensaries we have already. I mean, I don't know, it just seems like a lot for a town our size, that's.
You can lower the number.
We don't have the zoning to support it.
When we don't even have the zoning to support it, right, so that's 17 spaces.
It's again, it was an arbitrary number, so if you guys want to bring it down.
I would be in favor of lowering it to three.
For each category?
Yeah.
I would agree with Tucson, absolutely, but then if we did that, I.
But then all three of the dispensaries could apply for dual licensing and then eliminate somebody from the outside that has a lot of money that wants to come in and there's 40 or 50 jobs. So I mean, I hear what you're saying, I do, but it's like a double-edged sword in my opinion.
If our purpose is to help take, take advan, part of our purpose is to help take advantage of tax funds that we could receive in this way, that we need to be more open rather than less, I don't think the city in any way could support 15 different.
It would be 18 because that's like on top of.
Well, 18, I don't think they, if, if the market, if the market, if we could have 18 nice restaurants here, we would.
Right.
And we don't.
The market doesn't, can't support it.
So I don't think the market here could support that, but if it could, we, our tax base would, would grow.
So one of the things that you're more okay to do is you can bring the number down now and you can bring it up later. We can revisit, I think we've already talked about, we'd like to revisit this ordinance in two years, which is pretty quick for an ordinance. You can take it down to three by three by three, which is nine total. And then if you notice, I mean, even we can, we can notice that.
That leaves only, what, three? If the dispensaries were to apply for dual licensing.
But they'd need to move, wouldn't they? In their current locations, they need new facility locations.
Well, we're at some assumption, but probably yes.
So again, it, it's up to you guys, I am impartial anyway. I just picked that number because it seemed like a good idea.
I like the number five.
I, I agree, I don't, I'm not for reducing it because then, of the possibility of a monopoly, so to speak. And it, we could be shooting ourselves in the foot. And I do agree with you and I understand your concern about 18 possible locations. I just don't see it happening, I don't see, and, and if somebody was gonna put that much money into this town and say, take the, all of that spot behind Rays that goes to Ream Avenue and almost to the Orchard property, you know, and develop that into a cannabis industrial park, I mean, gosh, what is our tax base, it's gonna look great.
So what I would recommend at this time, because it sounds like there isn't consensus, sorry, let me wait. I can also be a lot louder if you guys really want me to. So again, the number is up to you guys, but it sounds like there isn't consensus, so you might want to vote on the number. The other thing too is I do have to take this back to John Kenny and ask some questions so you could also mull over what seems appropriate as well. So it, but it sounds like we're kind of split as, as your committee, so you guys can.
I mean, you guys are my teammates, I'm not trying to go against you, I understand, we're on, we're on the same page.
And I understand your position.
I disagree with your final, how you were, you know.
I, I just think it's a lot for this small town, that's all.
I understand.
I, I completely agree with Tucson and as Alan said, will the market support it? Maybe, maybe not, we can't take away, if 17 businesses apply for these, then we have 17 parcels that are, that are potentially doing this. So we can't eliminate these positions once we have them in place, we can add them. And to me, that makes more sense, just.
If we had 17 different businesses coming to do this.
That'd be 170 jobs.
Yeah, I think we'd be going.
Yes, maybe, maybe we would, and absolutely maybe we would, but we also, that may be what the City of Mount Shasta is centered around then and other businesses, there might be.
Then restaurants will follow and bookshops will follow.
Or there's just a, right, because then there are all these jobs.
If they're gonna go to Leavenworth because it looks like a German town, well, anyway, I.
Again, you guys can put it to a vote now how many you want to do, you can sit on them for next week.
Next month.
Or next month, I'm sorry, God, it's, it's been a long week.
I'm curious if incentivizing, well, you say we can't change the fee, I mean, if there's any kind of incentive to have one business have more than one license so we don't have.
There is an incentive built into having a business.
Right, you have a brand, you've got a brand.
Yeah, and you don't want to, it's like, oh, I'll do it over here too, you know.
Right, and then I still, I do wonder if we wanted to go sort of from seed to manufactured product and we only allow two licenses, is having, is that monopoly, what is the, and I'm just asking this generally, is, why is having one entity have a retail and each of the industry licenses? So having two industry licenses, three industry licenses and retail license? So they have their brand and they control every piece of the manufacture, the growing, the nursery, the cultivation, all the way up? Is, why don't we want that?
The, as I recall, the discussion was about the idea of monopoly. I don't know if that's a fair.
But that would be one, but there, so at most you would have, of the 18 potential licenses that one would have, four of them would be held by one entity. So that leaves 14 more other licenses that are still up.
So that would mean the potential of 12 held by the three in existence though, which would leave three left. Am I saying that right?
Potentially.
And then so that's, that was my whole concern about cutting off somebody, although I do kind of agree with the locals thing, we get some outfit that comes in and wants to spend some money and build a nice facility that's gonna employ 50 or 60 people, we're shooting ourselves in the foot by limiting that number. That's, that's where I'm just in disagreement with you because you're looking at a worst-case scenario, so to speak. And I get that, I'm with you, if that were to happen, I just really doubt that it would. So that's why I'm in disagreement with you on that part of your opinion.
Have we looked into what Eureka Calif, I think two meetings ago I discussed this, have we looked into what Eureka, California is doing with this? And if they've had any big, I, I know they have had big businesses come in and how they're dealing with that? Because I've heard mixed things, if having these big companies come in and employ a lot of people is really panning out.
Well, I'm not saying.
I was in Eureka a couple of weekends ago.
I was, I was just sort of.
I didn't, there was no, what was the problem, sorry.
I talked to one of the county supervisors, they're not about this, about timber actually, but they're having issues with big companies coming in and buying parcels in, within city limits and residential complaints essentially of smell and noise and traffic.
That's a zoning thing though.
It is a zoning thing, but I'm, I'm just saying 17 of these places or 18 of these.
We've also seen, and a, and a sort of a related type of industry, we've seen, I go to the Sierra Nevada restaurant in.
Chico.
Chico every so often. In my opinion, that place stinks, I mean, the hops and everything else, it just, you know, I drive by it once in a while, I even go to their restaurants. It doesn't, I think, I personally, I think that cultivated marijuana, if there's not too much of it, smells better, if there's a lot of it.
Right, but we're talking about 18 potential parcels, not one Sierra Nevada.
But not, not in here though, not in here, they're, they'll, they'll be pushed out, but they will necessarily be pushed out by the, how we zone this. We can control where they are.
I, I'm actually. We don't have enough space, I mean, okay.
Pardon?
We don't have enough space as an enterprise.
Well, but that is a control.
But in a way we do if they wanted to spend the money to build from the ground up. We don't have enough existing space.
The other possibility is if we do annex. So if we do annex new property into the city, it comes through you guys, you do zoning for that, there's a possibility for more property.
Well, we have Springfield and we have the land.
Correct.
Right, it doesn't.
So in terms of raw land plus, like I said, behind Rays.
The Landman might be a great place for that too, for a few of those businesses.
I could see reducing from five, but I would, I'm leaning towards increasing the number of licenses per into three.
I would agree with that.
Like the three?
Yeah, but I, I, given the fact we've already used the number three for all these things, I don't like the number four. So I think I'd go back to five, I'm sorry.
Is this OCD?
The old Chinese numeral four. Troubles are beautiful, threes are nice.
Threes are nice.
But fours are.
People like odd numbers.
I would rather start lower and then have the ability to add on one more if, you know, like a big industry business comes in and says, you know, we'd really like to do this here and then we can decide at that point, that's, that's my personal opinion.
I'm not necessarily referring to a corporation either because they tend to not really care about those small entry-level jobs and a lot of times those are pretty high turnover, as exemplified by.
But what you just said is you want to keep it at 18 and that would open it up for big corporate people to come in and do that.
Well, I didn't say corporate though, I said people with money to invest in.
We can't just, we can't say, well, you're a corporation, we have 18 spots, anybody can come and take those 18 spots. We can't tell, we can't say who it is, but, so that's what I'm saying, if we have all of these permits we're gonna issue, we can't say, oh, never mind, we're not gonna give you a permit, you're a corporation.
So again.
How much regulation of this, these corporations could we have? Could we limit the pay scale differential between the CBOs?
No, you cannot do that. One, one thing, so basically again, here's, here are the options that I see at this point. Someone may move to vote on however many licenses you want and then you have an official vote on it and I will change the ordinance. You don't always have to have consensus, that is perfectly fine. The second thing you could do is you can defer for a meeting, sit on the number, think about it, and then you can come back to it at the next one. Basically, everything you guys are saying is a correct viewpoint, so I can't, I'm not gonna take any side again, I'm gonna be impartial for that. But as I see it right now, you guys are kind of just going around in circles.
So one thing that will help me in this circle is how easily can we increase?
Very easily, all you have to do is reopen the ordinances and, and we can even schedule that for future agenda already.
So we could just say, okay, next meeting, we need to talk about increasing these and it's that easy?
So yeah, what you can do is, yeah, as a planning commission, you can say, we instituted this cannabis ordinance last year, we would like to review the ordinance and know what's going on. You guys can get status reports on any ordinance anytime you like.
Then I, I move that we reduce the number from two and five to three and three.
That was a reduced and an increased.
I know.
I agree with the increase, I.
The number of licenses that one business can have.
So, so just to let you know, you have, you have a motion on the table and so now it's appropriate if someone wants to second or not.
I don't know.
Doesn't sound like I got a second.
Well.
I'll second.
Okay, so now we can have discussion, so if we reduce to.
Aren't we supposed to vote? You can't just have more discussion after a second.
No, you can, you, so what it is, is you move someone's seconds and then you can open discussion upon request.
All right.
And I want to discuss.
So we're only discussing, we're only discussing the motion at hand, which was, is three, three by three by three, which is a total for nine.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so my understanding is if we do increase three and drop to three, that does mean that, that would create potentially the three monopolies and then there would be no, if that happened and the existing dispensaries got all of those licenses, there would be no other opportunities for other more cottage industry, one, they, they just wanted one piece of it, they could potentially be shut out.
That's true, but any of the dispensaries, if I'm understanding correctly, any of the dispensaries would have to not only acquire those licenses but have new facilities in some, some way, other physical locations.
But now, they would have, just because you have a license in your retail license, in your retail location, doesn't, does that mean that you have to have your nursery at the same location? Can't you have one, can't an entity have licenses in multiple locations?
So the maximum licenses are based on location, not business. So for example, if a dispensary owner would like to purchase another property and get a license, they can do that because we've associated the licenses with location, not business, which that is another option that you have, but that's not what's on the table.
That is, not what I was thinking.
So, yeah, me neither, so, so they would have to be at the same location to do all those, the different licenses?
Correct. So one, so for example, I want to open my own cannabis-related business, I can have a business license, it's normally associated with one location. So that's why there's kind of like a check in there, so we don't say that it's one business, but it technically is. But what you could do is I could, I have my one location, I apply for the maximum, there's nothing stopping me from getting another location, getting another business license with a different business name and getting more licenses.
So.
There's like a weird check and balance system in there in that one business license cannot be for multiple locations. So that's why they do franchising, franchising is the same business name, but it's a slightly different business owner, business location.
I think we should vote my motion down and then.
Okay, so, so you'd like to rescind your motion?
I'd like to rescind my.
And does your second?
Do you agree to that?
Agree.
I agree.
Okay, so we're starting over, which is fine.
So it's location-oriented.
I can, I can talk to John Kenny and say that we're not comfortable with that and would like some clarification.
I need a lot more information and to two on this because I, the image I had was a business, you'd have, they would have their retail operation, but you wouldn't have your retail operation because you'd have an ideal location for retail, which would not be the ideal location for your cultivation. So, you know, Joe Schmo has his retail license and has his cultivation license and two separate locations or even three separate locations for all four of his licenses. But that's not how it works.
Like I said, your business license has to be associated with an address.
Your business license, but are those, are these all, these individual licenses you're talking about all considered individual business licenses?
So what it is, is one location can have multiple licenses, but each application has to have an associated business license. That's a requirement to get your license, so the overall license, you have to have a business license. So it's kind of a check and balance for that because you can't have one business license associated with multiple locations. If that makes sense, I can clarify that for you, I will spell that out for next time.
So if I've got Acme Pot and I'm gonna have my Acme Pot retail spot over here and my Acme Pot brand co-creation over here and my Acme brand processing plant over here.
Let me clarify. Let me clarify it for you guys and bring it for next time. Sound good?
Yes.
Yeah.
We need, I need a lot of clarification.
The other thing too is we've also been talking about this for a very long time, and so I think we're all getting a little tired with it too, and getting around in circles. So, I will clarify that. Yeah, it's very good, I'm, I'm not against it, but I'm also starting to confuse myself, so I will clarify for next time.
Right, so we need, obviously we need something. Do you want enough information?
Yes.
Maybe that's like a diagram that explains a lot.
Right. You have to have, Acme Pot has to have four licensed places.
Again, let me, let me clarify, we'll come back to it next time.
Great. So it sounds like we're in agreement that we're also going to revisit this next month. Juliana, do you want to explain to us what you're going to come back with, so we all...
No, because we've gone through a lot for this last one. I have, so I have local preference, ask John Kenny prioritizing local. How do we define local priority for current holders? Can you prioritize locally established business? Number of license number, clarification of incentives adding more to one location, Eureka and cannabis records. Can you stagger licenses, which is another side thought for myself. Locational association of business license clarification, and that's all I got.
Waitlist, the waitlist.
Yeah, that's on there. It's how do I, how do we prioritize current holders?
I think you're right on the business license being associated with property though.
I'm pretty sure I am, but again, it's also getting to the point where I, I need to go clarify that for you.
And can you, yeah. Right, but is a, is this license?
Because like Weed Building Supply has a license for that location, and then their, the one off of wherever it is over here is a separate license. Yeah.
They have Weed, and they have Upton, and they have In Town.
Yeah, and they each have a business license.
Okay. Are we satisfied that we move on to...
I just don't know the relationship between the business license and these licenses.
Right, are these licenses tied to a location?
Yes.
Okay, they are.
Yes.
Okay, well, then we would...
It's just a blank sheet of paper. Thank you.
...to you on that.
If they were, all of the dispensaries would have to, like Alan said, move if they wanted to grow and produce and...
So again, we're deferring for one month. If you have additional questions, please email me. I would like to go home at some point during this thirteen hour day. The second in a row. And it'll, and it'll be four by the end of the week.
We can wait on the resilience dialogue if you want.
Do you want to...
Please, I'm really excited for this one. I just want to talk about this.
Which one?
I, um, yeah, we have two more significant things on the agenda.
The next one's significant, the last one's not. And I'll be fast to the last one.
Item eight is the resilience dialogue program.
Hey, I'm excited. I'm really, really excited to talk about this, because I haven't been allowed to talk about this for like six months, because it was a surprise, and I'm excited. So yeah, so the city of Mount Shasta was picked to participate in a national program called the Resiliency Dialogues, which is put on by the American Geophysical Union. And it was a previous President Obama initiative, which is the U.S. Global Climate Change Institute. I believe that's what it is. Basically, former President Barack Obama had instigated this institute to look at climate change and how communities are dealing with it, and because we've changed over to current presidency, they have disbanded and become a nonprofit under the American Geophysical Union, so they're still going strong. So they put together this resiliency dialogue, so Commissioner Beck, as well as Angelina Cook from the Mount Shasta Bioregional Ecology Center, where we represented the community as well as myself, and what we did is we basically did some trainings, as well as some teleconferences with subject matter experts. So these subject matter experts came from a variety of different fields to assist us, and all of them can be found on page forty-four of your packet. And so we had people who were from the Bay Area, along with Oregon, as well as other private contractors from Washington DC and stuff like that, helping us do this. So the overall goal of the program was to address resiliency for different communities in their community context. And so it was a, overall, it was a two-week program that we used an online web database. The first week was all about framing and, and setting up our community context, so that our subject matter experts could really see what's going on politically, as well as environmentally, and kind of looking at how we perceived our communities. The second week was really focused on highlighting opportunities for the communities to go forward. And the result was the synthesis report, which you'll see from page forty-three up to... I can't turn pages.
Up to sixty-five.
Six, yeah, sixty-two. Up to sixty-two. So basically, what came out of it is they summarized our community context, which you can find on page forty-five, which I'm really, really excited about this, because they did a really good job, and this cost us no money. This was free, and I like free things. And I like science, so that's why I'm kind of geeking out right now. So yeah, one of the things that I really want to point out, that I hit, I think they really hit the nail on the head, and it's really kind of caused my internal gears to a spin, was surrounded by lakes, rivers, forests, and mountains. Mount Shasta is rich in natural capital. This natural capital provides outdoor recreation opportunities and aesthetics, and is a point of local pride and community identity. And that really kind of struck me as something that we really need to take advantage of, because we've sat in this committee especially, as well as the other ones, talking about what has Mount Shasta become? Why has our economy kind of stagnant? We're very tourism based, how do we deal with that? And even something that even Commissioner Partey has touched on in previous meetings is, you know, the aesthetics aspect. I mean, we've kind of mulled over our architectural guidelines for a number of years prior to my arrival, as well as talking about landscaping, and talking about how, how do we create a community that really replicates the natural aesthetics around us? And so it kind of got my brain going, and really kind of highlighted for me that this is, this is an opportunity that we need to start taking advantage of. And so I was really excited to see the dialogues take that and really explain. So this is an outsider's take on this. I did not write the synthesis, the synthesis report. This is put together by Melissa Goodwin from the American Geophysical Union, and she has never visited Mount Shasta. So she wrote our context based off of how we perceive ourselves, which is, I think, really telling for me, that community context that came out, because that's how other people see us. And I thought it was a really good synopsis from my experience. Some of the key assets on page forty-six that they highlighted that came out of our discussion was again, the community buy-in that we have is pretty high here, so we do have a lot of people who attend meetings, not right now, but city council. The natural capital again kept coming up as, as a thing that kept being reiterated. Our, our sense of place, so being a small community with a specialized environment, we possess a unique identity which could serve as a starting point for messaging and action. So again, you know, having someone else tell you this is pretty nice. Like, it's really nice that we have a good sense of place. And then again, the size, having a smaller community, we tend to find it easier to get all of the community buy-in that we need. One of our subject matter experts joked with me on a phone call after this closed, was, they're like, you actually have the opportunity to survey every single resident in the city of Mount Shasta, because you only have thirty-three hundred. They're like, you could literally go door to door, which a lot of communities can't. So what came out of this that they really wanted to stress was a list of key questions that we should really be asking ourselves as we move forward as a community, if climate resilience is something we really prioritize, which again, from the input that I've heard since coming here about a year, a year and a quarter ago, you know, the environment, recreation, you know, the scenic viewscape, which has been brought up a lot, a lot of people bring that up, and it's not just people in the planning commission, it's not just people involved with the city. It's people who, believe it or not, I'm from Wisconsin, I drink a lot. It's people I've met in bars who basically said, I came here for the view and I'd never left. I mean, that's something that has been reiterated to me over and over again from other residences, people who literally their cars broke down, and then they never left. I met a guy who came here for a vacation, and his RV broke down, he was here for two weeks, and he's been here for a decade. So it's a story that's been reoccurring, is that people find themselves coming here for, for something and then staying. And so again, getting back to the question, sorry, I'm geeking out, so I need to stay focused. These are the questions that they recommend we start asking ourselves to become more climate, as well as disaster resilient, which is part of our priorities for this year, which is safety. And so those go all the way to page forty-eight. There's twenty-two of them with different categories. The focus being, you know, we have general questions, enhancing community safety and resilience through our infrastructure, which is a huge thing now with the water issues that have been going on. Infrastructure is obviously something we need to start really improving. The next one is capacity, so one of the things I, I shared with them, as well as the state, was, you know, as a small town, we not only lack financial resources, we lack human resources as well. We, we lack the number of people that San Francisco has, and therefore we lack the brain power as a whole to, to think of all these things. And again, you know, you guys are all here tonight working on things. A lot of people tend to be very active in their communities who also serve on our committees, and so you have people doing double duty, and not necessarily getting as many people in as you can with different ideas. So capacity was something they, they gave us some questions to help us expand that opportunity. Financing, again, finding more money would always be great. And then the other big two were engagement and collaboration, because we are surrounded by some very valuable agencies. So the National Forest Service, we have a lot of active citizen groups, we have a lot of active nonprofit organizations. The Ford McConnell Foundation are very active around here. It's about engaging them and collaborating, and that was something we had highlighted as well that we need to work on. And then ecosystem services valuation is a very preliminary one, but it's basically, how do you associate a dollar amount with a ecosystem service? And it can be a very difficult thing to do. So I was hired when I was back in Iowa to do a cost benefit analysis of stormwater shed improvements and stormwater systems. And so I had to put a dollar to a drop of water, in a sense, and it's incredibly difficult to do. And so one of the things that they found helped buy in is trying to value ecosystem services. Like, how much money does a wetland save us overall if we keep it there? How much does investing in a certain amount of wetland acreage save us money in the long run, or help us retain wildlife species? And it's trying to evaluate that. Obviously, that's something that's not going to happen very soon, because it's very difficult, but it's, it's something to think about, because we sit in a county that doesn't necessarily look at environmentalism or climate change as a priority. That was something that was echoed in ours, as well as that the county and the city of Mount Shasta are two very different animals. And so if we do start putting dollar amounts to investing back into our, our natural ecosystems, for example, Sisson Meadow is a great example of that. So how many people a year do we get going through that meadow who enjoy it as it is, rather than putting an industrial site on top of it? And so evaluating ecosystem services to our recreation area is very important to us, because recreation is such an important part of our economy.
Is there any way of kind of, our, our ecosystem here also provides services, in a sense, to the rest of the state?
Correct.
You know, and in terms of water storage and timberlands and soil that help keep our, the snows and, you know, all that is good for the rest of the state. Can we charge them?
I will get to that, actually. That's an important point that I will get to after this. But anyway, so the dialogue highlights and resources go on after that to help us address those questions. They help us with next steps and really are very prescriptive. And I found this really, really useful for myself as, as a planner, to look for all of these different planning specific resources, which goes into what you're talking about. So what I'm actually proposing is that, one of the things that came out of this, again, looking at, you know, being someone from the outside and coming in and looking at what's been going on and the things I've hear, I've heard, is that the city of Mount Shasta has found itself at kind of an impasse. And a lot of people haven't really been able to tell me what the city of Mount Shasta is. A lot of people talk about your vision statement, which I think is on the front of every single agenda packet that we have, is our mission is to maintain the character of our quote unquote "small town community." I don't know what that is, and I haven't been able to find a single person who has a consistent answer with another person of what that is. And so to have someone come in from the outside to do this dialogue, from myself being an outsider coming in, and what I've seen is, is your natural capital and your ecosystem services are very unique. I mean, I think there's something that should be built upon for your identity and for your sense of place, and it's something that I think as the planning commission and the city planner needs to start taking a bigger precedence in, in how we do things. So again, we're important for that, and again, for the state, is we're a highly pure area. I say that with E coli going on and chlorination, I get that. But we're one of the most unique areas in that we have so much untouched land, or we have so much land that can be enjoyed in the most, you know, primitive way. And, you know, we do get a lot of people who come up for that. I mean, we've talked about doing counts here for people who come up to this head water springs to use it. And, I mean, eyeballing it, they think there's, it's about forty-six hundred people a year who come up just for this spot. That's pretty extraordinary for having very little services associated with it, or having very little organization associated with it. You get people who come here just to come here, not mentioning the people who come here for the metaphysical side of it. And that metaphysical side is really associated with the natural environment that's here. It's with the attitude and the sense of place that it gives you. I mean, one of the things I've told people about, you know, what is it like to live here? I walk in the middle of Sisson Meadow and I say, it's like living in a postcard. It's so gorgeous, and it makes you feel so small that it's not real. And I think we need to start planning for that, and I think we need to start using that when we plan. And so I'm recommending as one of the next steps for this is that we redo the entire general plan under the scope of climate change and capitalizing on our, our natural features, because I think that makes us who we are and why we're here. So on page sixty-three, attachment number two is, is a City of Mount Shasta 2040 general plan scope. So what I'm proposing to do is, in the next two and a half years, with the assistance of the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, FEMA, EPA, as well as other organizations, to redo our general plan under the entire lens of climate change, and how that affects us, and how we're going forward to value our natural landscape and natural capital. Now, one of the things I want to bring up, Commissioner Partey talked about, you know, we are the source of the Sacramento River, and we're incredibly important to all of the downstream cities, which includes our capital. And so the, the city manager and I did go to Sacramento a few weeks ago to meet with the Office of Planning and Research, and they're highly supportive of us going forward with this, because one of the things that also came out, which I can send you electronic copies of, is the new State of California General Plan Guidelines for 2017. So what OPR is doing right now is there are new mandates to consider environmental justice, as well as climate change and greenhouse gas emissions in general plans. We don't do that yet, because we haven't updated ours for about ten years. So they're incredibly excited to see not only a community in California move forward with these new mandates, but a small city. There, the one thing that got pointed out too, I think you were there for that comment, Paul, was the, the national program we participated in had no cities under fifty thousand people. They had no perspective from a small town, which we are, in a sense, a very, very tiny town. We have limited resources, we're very unique, but that's, again, they pointed those out as assets, is that if we do want to try something innovative, if we want to try something different that everyone else wants to try, we can get it done and we can see the effects very quickly. So when you go to places like San Francisco, it takes a longer time for planning to permeate into the community, because there are so many people, it is so diverse, where we have the opposite. We can actually see what happens with that. And so the Office of Planning and Research is actually continually going to work with us on this, and in a sense assisted us with the next stage of this, which is we were just chosen by EPA and FEMA to have technical assistance to go through a disaster and climate resilience vulnerability assessment, which is one of the next steps mentioned in the synthesis report. And so they're going to be sending up a team of individuals to host two workshops in addition to preparing the climate assessment, the vulnerability assessment for us, for free. So we got another good free report. So basically, what it's showing is this, our attitude towards this, and the programs that we're participating in, people are interested in that, and they want to come here and do this. They're interested in people who actually value the natural capital that we have to offer, as well as our concern for either replicating it or preserving it. And the general plan in particular has interested not only FEMA and EPA, but also one of our subject matter experts is an instructor at the Vonnebich School of Public Policy at Ohio University, not Ohio State, but Ohio University. But he's also working with us to contact an individual from Scripps and the Desert Institute to also send up individuals to help us with data collection, because people want to study what happens. People want to know how to do climate change as an applied community policy, and, and they want to use us as that poster child. And they want to use us as that poster child. So, we're converging on an opportunity, frankly, of a lifetime for planning. Because not only is everyone excited that we are so special, but they want to build on it and they want to see what we have to do. Sorry, I'm really excited. So, yeah, so I've been trying to...
Is there a chance, Juliana, that you have a... Some sort of... I believe in all this stuff, but in terms of the implementation of an ordinance that helps us deal with climate change or disaster, is there... Do you have an example of one that's kind of... Might work in a small town for us? What...
So, that's the exciting thing. They don't. No city has ever wanted to do their general plan under the focus of climate change. So, in this, I'll share the 2017 guidelines. People are starting to do climate change sections of their general plan, but no one has prioritized natural capital or climate change as the main focus of their plan. We would be the first. And that's why a lot of people are pretty excited for it. And that's what I've been getting a lot of buy-in for. But one of the things, again, staying on topic of making sure that this is the city's plan and what I've heard is recommending the theme of the general plan revision be the spirit of Mount Chasta. So, the theme is based on kind of the history of the area along with, you know, some of the things I've been hearing. And so, the description of this is on page 63. So, the reason why having the general plan revision in this theme is the Mount Chasta region is home to unique natural landscapes that have inspired not only individuals, but the first people to settle and care for the land. The spirit of Native American culture and stories about the region bring magic and wonder to the mountain as well as the surrounding forests. This wonder expanded into white settlements whose spirit of adventure and opportunity brought them along the Native American trails to discover gold and new life. The settlements grew with the rest of the United States with the spirit of industry and commerce through the proliferation of the logging industry. And the railroads and highway development followed to enhance the early economy and growing population. Education and access now in the current century through the internet brought forward the spirit of wisdom and equity. And so, the spirit of Mount Chasta continues as we grow and respond to changes in our environment, our economy, and our society. And we must find the new or revisit the old spirits that led us to meet the needs of our community and preserve our place in history. So, that's basically what I'm proposing, is to do the general plan with that thought in mind and basically very much prioritize outreach and talking to a lot of people. As I've said before, I've started bringing in other agencies as well as some of the Native American tribes. One of the things that has been brought up at the city council level is investing more in historic preservation. And they've talked about doing a standing committee for historic preservation to create a historic preservation element, to bring back some of those aspects of Native American culture along with also engaging some of the other cultures, like our literary history of adventures, like... I can never remember the gentleman, Joaquin's last...
John Muir.
That one. Joaquin Miller and John Muir. And so, you know, it's a... I feel like it's the best theme that I could pick along with, you know, making the recommendation that this is something that we do. And again, it is a huge recommendation. It would be the next two and a half years. It would also include a zoning code update. All of the deliverables that I'm proposing are on page 65 of the scoping document. So, deliverables one through seven would be a 2040 general plan rewrite and updated zoning code, an annexation timeline and integration plan, public facilities master plan, green space and green infrastructure master plan, an architectural development guidelines amendment, and then, an economic prosperity plan. That's a lot, and I know it is. But to be honest, what I've heard from a number of different people, this is what's needed right now. A lot of people... We have talked about a lot of these things in the past about green infrastructure and landscaping and doing a specific plan for that. We've talked about doing an architectural design guideline. So, I think it's incredibly important. And one of the things you'll hear is we have a housing discovery team and zoning might come up as well as being an issue. All of these things have been talked about and a lot of people have said, you know, we need an economic plan. We need to renew our architectural development guidelines. So, I think this is a really good time for us to take that opportunity to really explore these things and redo the general plan because that's the basis for how we make all of these plans and how we make all of our decisions. And I don't think our current general plan does us really any justice. Our general plan is incredibly generic and it really hasn't been something that a lot of people are excited to work on because they don't feel any ownership of it. And I say that from the fact that the city council wants to do another strategic plan with their own goals. They don't want to listen to the general plan in most cases, which is frankly, just what I've noticed.
I think you probably know this is typically what happens when you end up with a generic plan is because the ebb and flow of political forces have ended up with, you know, blah in it. So...
Yeah. And frankly, the best element that we have right now is our housing one. It's the most recent. And because mostly when you redo a housing element, it's really just the housing element with some pieces of circulation and land use taken in. But yeah, I think this would be the best use of our time for the next two and a half years. And I think there is a lot of additional support from organizations as well as the public and other outside organizations that want to come in and assist us with this.
One of the things that isn't directly spoken of in here, and you talked about infrastructure and some of these other things, we talk about the environment and taking care of it and water. We don't talk about the other end of it, which is how we deal with our sewer, how we deal with sewerage. And we have a very, very standard, very, you know, typical approach that we use in dealing with the sewer. And that's something that as climate change comes to the fore, population change, everything like that, we need... We will need to start doing differently.
Correct.
And we're going to start putting money into expanding our standard sewer system here soon, right?
That's a state mandate. It's a $15 million project, but...
I understand, but how it's done?
Yeah.
I think that we need to start looking at new technologies that aren't quite... We're trying to reduce the amount of water we use. We're trying to do all these other things. I think that we... How we flush our toilets and what that's about and where it goes and how it's treated and things like that is... Some people don't want to necessarily think about it, but it's how we deal with our sewer is really key. If there's a disaster, how that sewer works and continues to work is very important.
Or breaks into a wetland.
Yes.
So, yeah. Which was actually the best possible scenario we could have had for that break because the wetland pretty much...
Absorbed it.
Sopped it up. So...
Yeah.
But yeah, so that's the proposal I'm basically bringing to you today is I'm requesting that you recommend to the city council to pursue a general plan rewrite to be approved in 2020 with the deliverables and scope that I've attached. And also, make the recommendation that the planning commission assume the role of the framing or steering committee for the general plan, which would mean that we would, after this, we'll talk about the planning department priorities if you do or do not approve this because that'll determine that. But basically, what it would do is we would finish up the ordinances we're working on now, as well as a special event ordinance that was dictated to us. And then, basically, from here on out, work on the general plan and day-to-day business for the planning sector. Yeah.
Funding and who and are we hiring and who will be... How to do this? I'm assuming we'll put it out.
RFP. Yep. So, right now, I anticipate that the circulation element will need specific engineering because we do some recommendations from... Again, this will also include the other standing committees. So, ATC has been wanting to do a circulation element rewrite to be more multimodal, to look at those things. So, I will need a transportation engineer. So, most likely, the ones that I'll need, RFPs and funding for are noise consultants and the circulation. But what I'm proposing is, as we do that, that it is based off of data collection and data analysis. So, it'll be written in-house in conjunction with the consultants. So, basically, the proposal is that my department with you, as the steering committee, would be writing... I would be writing and proposing to you language and then going forward and managing consultants.
That's cool.
Bruce Pope is on board as far as the city manager, as far with the scope of the work. And I understand what's happening. But I think we're at a good point. And I think, again, like I said, RFP-wise and consultants bringing in, noise is obviously going to be a big one as well. Circulation, there will be RFPs for data collection and data analysis associated with each of the elements. But like I said, I've been getting a lot of support from the Office of Planning and Research. That's why I haven't been talking about this at all for six months because I wanted to get some of that lined up. So, again, I've been applying for technical assistance rather than grants so that we actually don't have to pay anything for this and that we end up getting a report on what they find. So, for example, the vulnerability assessment, those workshops will be used as part of our public outreach for the general plan. So, I'll be roping in all of those opportunities. And then, I also have a lead on GIS and data improvements for the city. That would be technical assistance as well. So, I'm working with a lot of different organizations to manage the technical assistance aspect of it so that we don't have to spend money for matching dollars as well as do that. But the bigger thing right now is I'm kind of at... I mean, not an impasse. I did want to share it with you guys. I wanted to set up as much opportunities as I can, but to get more, I'd need to have the planning commission and city council basically prioritize this as a project for the next two and a half years. So, we've reached that point where people said, "Yes, we'll assist, but you need to get your decision bodies on board." Because it is ultimately up to you. This is, I understand, an incredibly large, maybe, pipe dream. But I know I'm capable of handling it. I wouldn't propose it if I wasn't.
I don't think you're not. I think that you need an assistant, though, to do everything else you do.
We can recommend Bruce to do that. I've talked to Bruce about that.
To be the assistant?
No, no, to get one.
To get an assistant.
Yeah, again, it's going to be up to... I'm pursuing opportunities where I can do that, where I can get people here. Like I said, the Vonnebich School of Public Policy is working with two other institutions to obtain an NSF grant for us, the National Science Foundation, to get PhD-level students out here. There's also another program called Civic Spark. And there's another one that it's similar to AmeriCorps, but it's PhD students who are doing applied work. And so, we're going for those as well to get one-year PhD students coming in to assist as well, which would be wonderful. So...
But then, but you still have the synthesis.
Yep. Yep. And so, yeah, so I'll be going to Cal Poly next week for a conference to basically discuss this and see what kind of assistance that would look like, if there would be a conjoined program there, as well as the city manager's also been assisting me with other higher education institutions, masters or PhD programs about having other individuals come up here and assist as well.
And the primary difference is having been through a general plan complete revision myself. So, I can actually feel a little partnership on there. I mean, not that it's the greatest general plan, but, you know, having been through a general plan update and having the city's got, you know, we got training how to do a general plan update and what that entails. I mean, I guess my thinking is that training for me was really helpful. I think that if we're going to undertake this and do this in-house, I'm kind of going ad hoc here on everybody. But I think that the planning commission needs training on how to update a general plan, especially with the consideration of the new 2017 guidelines. I mean, that's almost a separate...
Yeah, there's a lot and OPR can help us with that. And so, again, like I said, we're at the point now where... I've written that down and added it to the list. We're at the point now, like I said, I've done as much legwork as I can without getting legislative action from you or the city council. But we're coming to that point where, like you said, I need a firm, "Yes, we're going to do this." And then, I can follow up with OPR and do that. But OPR has been really, really helpful, which I've never seen a state planning agency want to do that with a small town before. Even in working in Wisconsin, the state doesn't frankly care about small communities. They say they do, but they don't. But OPR is genuinely honest about coming up. They're actually coming up with FEMA and EPA for our workshops and the initial discussion with them about the vulnerability study. So, they are serious about coming up. They are serious about providing resources that they can. But the training is good.
Since the... Siskiyou County does feel like it's neglected by the state, this would be an opportunity for us to less neglect it.
They are excited to come up too. And they're excited, like Commissioner Partey brought up, they're excited that an upstream city cares about its downstream relatives. They actually brought that up. They're like, "That's... We've never heard..."
I'm not sure they care about them.
Yeah.
I think that I'm...
They should care about us more.
We provide... Our community has... Our landscape here has functional values that serve them. And we're the ones that shovel the snow and ski on the snow too. But I don't know.
So, they should care about us more.
Yeah.
Well, right. They should support us to take care of down our impacts that could be affected downstream.
Right. And writing this plan under the lens of climate change and environmental protection is, I think, kind of cool. I mean, having a general plan that is written under that lens is like...
Well, we've had issues with CEQA in the past. When I first came here, everyone was terrified of CEQA. And people are still. I mean, the number of people who advocate through CEQA is exceptionally high. And...
Everybody across the state is afraid of CEQA.
Yeah. Yeah. Mount Chastans are just a little bit meaner about it when they call you on the phone. But yeah, it's basically setting up the general plan this way as well ensures that we're proactive rather than reactive. And it might improve some of the relationships that were kind of burned in the past related to Mount Chasta.
So, you need a motion?
Yeah. I would like to... So, the two on the table, doing them one at a time. So, the first one would be the city staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the city council to invest in a general plan revision and to move forward with a general plan revision.
So, could I just read this statement that you've got here under recommendation? I move we blah, blah, blah?
Yep.
Is that okay? Yes.
Unless there's any discussion amongst the officials.
Could it be under the condition that she gets... Juliana gets the assistant she needs? I mean, we have to update the general plan.
What is our... That's a good point. So, what is our timing if we didn't pursue this opportunity? What's our timing on... I mean, I know we have to redo the housing element every year. And we want to redo the circulation element, but...
We want to redo a lot of... So, the current...
But we want to and being required to. When's our next revision required, for instance?
Oh, well, you're kind of... Well, you're technically past due on circulation. There's a complete streets recommend... Or pretty much a complete streets mandate that has to happen for the circulation element. You yourselves have prioritized safety and noise this year.
That's not codified.
Yeah. And then, the other mandates are... And they do have a lovely graph in here of what we're mandated to do. We're also mandated to address environmental justice in every single element.
But that's triggered only when you start the revision. It's not like if you don't... You have to have an environmental justice element or environmental justice discussion in your general plan by like...
Statute.
There are timelines. Normally, it's five years, but I think for the planning, it's 10 or so, which, I mean, that would put us at another general plan rewrite anyway. So, we're 10 years old right now for the full thing. Normally, general plans are done at about 15- to 20-year intervals. So, we are technically early, if we want to look at it that way from the timeline. But as far as mandates, I know the circulation one is coming up. Other things, though, associated with our general plan are coming up sooner, like solid waste has mandates that we have to meet in the next four years, things like that. So, the next five is when a lot of the mandates are coming up. I don't know what the environmental justice one is off the top of my head. It's usually about five or 10, depending.
I'm curious. When did we prioritize noise? Did we, as a body, prioritize noise?
In February.
I don't believe it was in February.
Did I miss that meeting?
Yes.
Maybe.
We shouldn't. Well, okay.
We did because... And I will say it because I advocated for it because at that point, we wanted to do surveys during the summer months to get a baseline for noise. And so, we needed to prioritize it in order to do anything because we don't have any kind of noise ordinance as of now. So, in order to get that baseline, we needed to get surveys in place for the summer months while there was concerts. I don't know if that's...
That's similar. Yeah. So, basically, the noise ordinance you guys came up with was not accepted by the city council. One of the chief comments on it was that it didn't really add to special events or really address, you know, downtown noise and attracting people to the downtown or nightlife and things like that. So, I recommended instead of trying to rewrite a noise ordinance off of a standard noise element, to just redo the noise element with the overarching goals of having levels for special events, having levels for different land uses, which is a little bit more typical in noise elements rather than just baseline. So...
And I believe there was a city hall meeting or some town hall meeting or something.
There was a workshop.
Workshop where people like...
Yeah, I know. I remember that.
People came and they were like, "We want a noise ordinance."
Well, Dale was... There was a couple of people that were really into it. But yeah, okay. Just curious.
And that was accepted. The city council mulled over it as well. I brought up the economic development aspect as well. economic development aspect as well, which I think was mulled over, and then City Council agreed with noise. So, we'll be talking about those priorities next, depending on what you guys would like to do.
Okay, so any other comments, questions, discussion around before we head to...
So on that topic of noise, that will be addressed in a, so we kind of, we'll just put that all, if we do vote to move forward with a general plan rewrite, noise will just kind of be lobbed in with that, so.
We will talk about that as a next item, because I put that as a next item.
So Melanie, do you wanna talk further about the costs and the fact that we don't have to do it right now?
Well, that's, I mean, that's on the table. It's, just so we know, this is...
It is a huge endeavor.
It is very cool, and it is a very cool opportunity, absolutely. And I just want, it's like, all the information out there.
So I did check with Muriel, our finance director, about what I, because what I had said a long time ago, I was like, you know, your general plan's due in 10 years, is there an ability to set aside money each year for that, so that by 10 years, we have a good pot of money to use for that? She said it doesn't work that way. What works is, how we're supposed to do this is that the City Council prior, the Planning Commission recommends the City Council to prioritize a project, and then we set a budget for it. So I, once I know that you guys wanna do this, I will work on the budget aspect and go to Muriel and have that programmed into my department. That's what I was told, so, I mean, I can't give you a better answer than that. I mean, what I can say is, I'm going for technical assistance, I'm talking to people about grants, I'm getting a lot of yeses, I mean, basically, people are going to help us with this. As far as the city's contribution, what I've heard is that the city manager's supportive of this, the finance director is supportive of this, they just need the City Council to prioritize this as an action item.
Right, and so, in terms of your time, I mean, we, we, PMC did it last time, and so they had a number of staff people dedicated to helping it out, helping out with it, and so that's a consulting firm doing it, obviously, they have other projects going on, so I just wonder, in terms of your time and your other obligations...
Again, we're gonna talk about that once we get to the priorities, once you make a decision on this, is that we would, like I said, restructure my priorities to be the general plan rewrite, finish up the sign ordinance, lighting ordinance, and special event ordinance. And then after that, no more municipal code revision unless we absolutely have to.
Right, I guess I would want more information, because again, before, I mean, I understand we can talk about that afterwards, but in terms of your work obligations and, you know, people coming in?
Again, if you set the priority and City Council approves it, that is the priority of the city.
Right, but in terms of, you know, you have your, you have your open hours where people come in and they wanna do a lot of adjustment, or they wanna get a home business or, you know, a home occupation, whatever. And anyways, you have all those other things going on, that's what I wonder.
In addition, again, once you prioritize this as an action, we'll go forward with steps to prioritize that as my priorities. So again, you can put a moratorium on rezonings, the things that actually take a long time, which are going to change anyway. Again, home ox take me like 20 minutes to do. And, again, boundary line adjustments maybe take me an hour. I mean, these are things that are not, again, we will still do the day-to-day to maintain what's going on, but there are certain things that we will recommend to put a moratorium on for two years, like a rezoning application, because it doesn't make sense for someone to go through a big rezoning application process if we're gonna change the zoning code. So we're gonna go through with those processes once you prioritize this as a project. I'm not gonna go through and write all these resolutions up for City Council if you're not gonna prioritize this. I think that's where we're at right now. If you recommend this to City Council, and City Council shoot, City Council can shoot it down, too.
If they don't think we have the funding or something like that, they're gonna say no.
Yeah.
So if you think you need an assistant, or you need extra time or something like that, they're gonna say no if we can't afford it.
That is their purview, they're in charge of budgets.
Asking City Council, or recommending it to City Council, basically.
Recommending it to City Council basically puts it on their agenda and says that you're okay with this. That's kind of the stage we're at. I just need the initial, we're okay with this, move forward, and then I will begin the process and go through, setting up trainings, setting up what we should put on hold as far as applications.
So I'll know.
What?
Alan, just started.
Oh, Alan.
Sorry.
So anybody, anybody else have any other questions, comments? Okay.
I move we recommend the City Council pursue a general plan rewrite to be completed prior to 2020, and further recommend to the City Council that we, that the Planning Commission be charged with serving as the framing committee and overseeing the progress of the general plan.
I'll second.
And I have a little discussion point. Isn't the point of this to have the lens of resiliency, isn't the point of this that? Shouldn't that be part of the motion?
If you guys wanna put in there the scoping document that I have attached, as per the scoping document attached, you can do that.
As per the scoping document attached.
Second, you're agreeable for that?
Second, yes, I second.
Okay, we have a motion, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, how since you unanimously...
Okay, I will go fast to the next one.
So now we have a, I remember, where...
Nine.
Item number nine, which is the, um...
Let me just bring one small, there's a typo, do you want typos, or do you want me to leave typos alone?
Yeah, that's fine. You can, if you just mark it on the one that you have, I'll take it.
All right.
Okay, so we have item number nine, Planning Department Priorities Update.
So, again, since you made the decision, I think you should revise, the ultimate idea is to have the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council to restructure the department priorities as follows, and it writes in there. So looking at what we've accomplished so far, so in February, to catch up, Alan, Attachment One on page 69, as well as the back on page 70, were the planning priorities for 2017 that we approved. The main areas that we had approved were one, two, and three. The alternate economic development was not chosen by the City Council at this time, so that one we're not doing, it's just part of the old list. So basically, what we've done so far is, we did obtain FEMA funding for repair of some infrastructure that was damaged during the January and February disaster events, so we are improving, hopefully, we'll be finishing up with FEMA on Monday, Rockefeller Alder Lake Castle, and possibly Washington Avenue. Washington's the one on the fence right now, if they're gonna fund, that would basically be removing the asphalt and putting in brand-new road, curb gutter and sidewalk. Public Works has also successfully obtained planning dollars for expansion of the city water system and sewer upgrades. That'll take water piping over to the Roseburg property, that'll actually start making that more viable of a development. And then, planning dollars are the first step to obtaining construction dollars, it's way easier to get construction dollars than planning for those. ATC and the city of Mount Chasta are working to obtain funds through the expansion of Senate Bill One to construct the Midtown Trail and improve bicycle supporting facilities, so we're making headway on that as well. Cannabis industry, as you know, you're going on, you're going on a good pace, so we're set to meet that by the end of the year. So the developments, so the city staff have developed preliminary documents and identified new pieces of information to create a streamlined development process to help developments go forward. In addition to streamlining, a Housing Discovery Ad Hoc Committee has been created by the City Council to identify and elaborate on constraints to developing a healthy housing market. And this team will present to the Planning Commission and City Council in November their findings, so that'll help us with residential development. All right, and then accessory dwelling units, as you know, you've approved a recommendation to City Council, that'll have a first reading in September, so that's gonna be completed probably in the next month or so. Lighting ordinance, you've created a viable ordinance, set away its recommendation, it's just been put on the back burner, because we have lots of stuff to cover. And that should be coming to you, and that should be most likely approved by the end of the year. And then the resiliency dialogue, as we've stated, has resulted in a completed synthesis document, and then it has also made us eligible with the Building Disaster Resilience in California workshops and climate vulnerability analysis, so that's gonna be taking part in the next few months. We're on track also to renew our Hazard Mitigation Plan by November. So, the request for change in priorities, so based on the discussion and action of the previous item, the priorities may need to be amended to prioritize that general plan, so we're not gonna stop anything that we're doing right now, we're gonna see those to the end of the year. But some of the other things, like I said, we have not started with housing, or, sorry, not housing, we haven't started with noise at all, we haven't started amending the safety element of the general plan. So those, those things would be taken off and put into that new item for prioritization. And then the other thing is, is we would not have any minor planning priorities like ordinance amendments or anything like that. So we'll finish up the programs that we have for this year, as well as the priorities do need to be updated to include a special event ordinance revisitation or revision that was mandated by the City Council. They requested that you take a look at the special event ordinance, which we'll cover in a little bit.
Okay, anybody, any questions? So from us, you would like a motion to...
Restructure.
Restructure our priorities according to the first paragraph there on your, on your statute report?
Yep.
I guess, I'd like to, yeah, clarification on, these are the priorities that are right now, and you'd like to change it to what's on here, the recommendations.
Yep.
So does that mean that the sewer would take kind of not as much of a priority?
Just for my department. So the Public Works Department will still continue to work on that, but my department will back off. So I've been helping Rod with just some of the sewer questions and sewer maintenance stuff like that. So I haven't really made a ton of headway on that one, because we've been waiting for a grant cycle to come around for sewer and water, but in the past, PACE Engineering has helped Rod with those applications anyway, so that'll still continue. I'll just back off of lending support to that.
Given that, if I may interrupt, is there any chance that we might change direction towards a more environmentally friendly sewer treatment?
I think city staff is of the opinion that, you know, if this is something that's important to you, we would be willing to do it, because as much as training for the general plan rewrite is needed, you know, training and education from a city staffer standpoint is something that we need to do as well, and people have been open to that.
My personal experience hasn't shown Pace to be the innovator in things like that, so it might be worthwhile to, I mean, they might help us get the money, get the grant, that sort of thing, but working with a different firm that might, or maybe they've got new personnel, then now they're into it, but historically, they were pretty conservative in those terms.
So the subcontractors of the city are reflected by, again, our general plan and what we've chosen to prioritize. So I think the general plan rewrite is a good step towards either PACE moving to that type of focus, or for us to hire a subcontractor that is in that focus. That makes sense?
It does.
Okay.
Are you talking about the imminent project?
I would like to affect the imminent project, but...
And is, it seems like, is the, has the ball rolled too far down the hill for changing or shifting direction on that?
I know we've done quite a bit of it, but let me ask, and I can bring it to the next meeting if that...
Quite a bit of it in terms of engineering, or quite, yeah, or quite a bit of it in terms of...
I know we've started the planning and engineering of it, a lot of it is in response to the mandate and what type of things we have to have, as far as, you know, the added aspect of environmentalism and energy efficiency, I don't know if that's been added or not. But you know what, I will ask, and I can email you, or have, give you an update on that through email, if that works.
How about to, and to the commission?
I'm sorry?
Email, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, to the commission, it'll be a commission email, from myself.
Yeah, I'd really like us to start going that direction.
I know we got stalled a little bit, we were waiting on something from the state as far as them looking at what we're proposing as far as preliminary, but I don't know how far along we are, but I will get back to you.
Oftentimes, it's the county, I know the state has to buy off on it, but so does the jurisdiction you're in. We tried to do a different wastewater system down in, outside of Anderson, is that Shasta still? And, or maybe it's to Hama County.
Hama.
And they were, they, you know, you had to do it flush toilets down the sewer line into the Big Bond, that was it. So I don't know if the state is, has changed their tune in terms of the type of facilities that they will, you know, support.
We do have required, we do have required, like, aspects of that that we need to have, which is why we have such a hefty mandate of, it's gonna be about 15 million...
Yeah.
Because we are required to have certain things we don't have now. But I will check on that, and I will check on the requirements that are in there. I will get you information.
Similar to other things that we're more agile in dealing with, with a small community like this, you know, doing a new technology is less onerous.
Right, for small scale, I mean, I think of the city of Arcata, and what they've done.
Yeah. And we have some unique weapon forms down there, too, that we might be able to take advantage of.
I'll get you information on that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anything else to somebody?
No, I was just agreeing with Alan, that I'd like to see the sewer project go, go in more in that direction.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, or are we ready for a motion?
Can I make the motion?
By your means.
I'd like to make the motion that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council to restructure the department priorities as follows: general plan rewrite, sign ordinance revision, cannabis industry ordinance creation, and special events ordinance revision.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, you got that, Billy?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? How since you unanimously, we are on item 10, can you believe it? Questions and staff comments?
I have comments, I guess I will, just so it's...
So, with...
Thanks, sorry. So, I'm sure one of you knows at least that I work a little bit part-time with a nonprofit, and we coordinate educational woods tours. Our tour this year is October 5th, and I'm working with the Shasta T National Forest Service, the district office, basically, and we are working to do a South County tour, in which we will most likely tour an active thinning forest service plantations. You'll also have the opportu, well, the tour is led by wildlife biologists, the cultureists, RPFs, that kind of thing. And we'll also be adding to a tour, more than likely, of the Roseburg Mill, you'll be able to look at the biomass facility and see an active milling operation. So it's, I'm not an expert, I'm not a registered professional forester, but it's a really informative tour, you get to see public and private forest timberlands, and it definitely emphasizes the management side of it, but I think, especially with the conversations we had today, a lot of you might find it useful and interesting, for sure. And we've had City Council members go in the past, Kathy and Tim have both attended, as well as county supervisors and that kind of thing, so it's open, I know all of you won't be able to attend because of Brown Act rules, I don't think more than...
We can do that, as long as we're not discussing.
I don't know, I don't think we can technically all be there.
I can double-check with Kathy Wilson, I think what it is, is, from my understanding, Kathy Wilson can correct me, because she's the authority. Vice Chair Finling is correct, but we really highly suggest that you're not in the same area, because sometimes things can organically happen, so we usually try and tend to have three of you tops.
If, if three of you would like to join, it would be wonderful, I think you'd find it very informative. It is a Thursday, it's pretty much all day, we provide lunch, breakfast refreshments, and then like a cocktail hour afterward where we discuss.
Dance the night away.
Great, good to hear. Okay, who else has a comment?
I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, and so I'm just gonna keep mentioning it, on the corner of Caroline and Jesse, I believe it is, and then up about another 50 feet from there, the sidewalks there are absolutely hideous, I know we don't have the funding, but I'm still bothered that our school kids have to walk out in the street to get to Sisson right there, and I really wish we could do something about it, it's really bad. It's almost across the street from your house.
It is awful. I agree, I took, was it by who?
And if it wasn't the fact that kids have to go into the street to get to school, I wouldn't even, you know, it wouldn't bother me so much, so that's all.
We have an ATEC meeting on Friday, so I can bring it up with them, as far as, maybe they can make a formal recommendation to City Council that it...
Right in front of Dean Solomon's house, it's literally like this.
Yep, that's fine, you don't have to convince me about it.
This is slightly related to that, I live on a cul-de-sac, and next year, when the plow comes... I live on a cul-de-sac, and next year, when the plow comes through, it will take the rest of my curb away, because it's taken almost all of it already.
So what you can do is, you can contact the city if, if it is plow-related, and we do come out and fix that for you.
It has to be replaced now, I mean, it's, I'm serious.
Yeah, no, we, we do that actually pretty frequently, but you have to do a work order with us. So if you want in the email, I can also send you the work order information.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else on this side? How about...
I have a question for Juliana. Do you get many complaints of people in residential neighborhoods with the marijuana smell or cannabis, you know, smell?
I have not gotten a single one. I can ask the police department if they've gotten any calls.
Ask Parrish. Last time I talked to him about it, I'm sorry to interrupt, he hadn't had any complaints.
Okay.
Yep.
I was just curious.
But you should take it upon yourself to ask Parrish.
What would that be from, just like...
Just neighbors, you know, smoking in their house, or whatever.
Oh, I thought you meant personal gardens.
No, not gardens, just, just smoking, you know.
Oh, I have not.
Okay, just, just curious.
Anything else?
Nope.
Can we have a little update on our wire?
I have lots of good updates. So, right now, we are, we are chlorinating still because of the state requirement, so the state may possibly require us to chlorinate permanently. So we, we taught, we talked about that at the city council meeting last night, and what I can do is, when we have that recording up, I can send it to you guys, but we're, we're working really hard to not chlorinate. Rod's trying really, really hard to get any other thing than that. He's gonna be proposing UV rather than chlorination, if we do happen to do any sort of treatment facility for that, but right now, we're at the mercy of the state.
Is, is it still, or was it in fact one spring source, or was it...
It was Tank One. So Tank One is the oldest tank that we have, it's concrete top, bottom, sides, and that one was actually, we just got a planning grant from Drinking Water to do the planning in Sequa to replace that tank, because we understand it is very old and is at the end of its lifespan. That has been completely disconnected from the system, it is no...
Is that located?
I, I don't know.
Is that Quail Hill?
I have no idea.
I think so.
Isn't that where our springs?
I think so.
They're all over, there's more than one.
Yeah, but number one, I think, I think he's right in that one.
So anyway, I, also, if you're gonna talk...
Is that, um, is, is that the only one that we had the E coli problem with each time?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So we've had coliform issues with it in the past. The E coli, the first one was a confirmed false positive, it was like one per 1 million, and we did, didn't find anything else. That wasn't even anywhere near Tank One, that was, that was our spring. So the second E coli appearance was in Tank One, and that, we disconnected the tank fully, it is no longer connected, it's, it's something that we knew it was at the end of its lifespan, and we're moving forward with that, but right now, we're more on the try not to get the state to mandate us to chlorinate.
So will the replacement of that tank help with that decision?
We think so, yeah. Well, and we are replacing it. It, we did successfully get planning dollars, and then, once the planning and Sequa is done, we will go and get the construction dollars to do it. And we've pretty much found that we're a good candidate for the, the construction dollars. We've been very successful with grants in the past for those things. But yeah, we're, we're working really hard not to do that.
Was that meeting very well-attended last night?
What?
Was the meeting very well-attended last night?
Yes, we had a lot. We had probably close to 30 people, but we only had about half a dozen speak because everyone liked what we were saying, because we don't wanna do it.
Mm-hmm.
We're trying really hard for the state not to do it. So basically, if, you will see more information, so if the state does mandate it, we are gonna put it out there for everyone to be transparent, and basically giving everyone their phone number. So, that's basically where we're at right now, we're trying anything to get that up, so, um, yeah, that's where we're at with that. But, the other good news, well, that's not really good news, but, the good news is, is the Nest has gone through escrow and has a new owner.
Wait, say that again, I missed the Nest.
The Nest 305 Old McLeod, the old motel.
Old Shasta's mobile port.
That has gone into escrow, and that does have a new owner. So we are working very diligently to get in contact with those new owners, to discuss what they're gonna do with that, and ensure that they move forward with cleaning that up, or fixing it, or doing something with it.
Good.
There you go.
Last thing, I'd, I'd like to, I text, I emailed you this, but I'd like to thank you again for your very professional response to Ms. Krieger.
Yeah, I guess if you want me to cover that for those who weren't CC'd on that email, one of the things I, I was gonna talk about, too, is privately, if you can, if you would like to. Originally, Ms. Krieger had requested all of the email addresses of the planning commissioners to send you information. Kathryn Wilson, because you have private addresses, did not get them out, she does not feel comfortable making that decision for you. So in the future, if you would like your emails to be public information, we can do that, please let me know privately if you'd like to do that, we can host that. I don't see anyone really jumping at that. We apologize for, for her getting your email addresses that she did get, that was not provided by us.
Okay, I was curious about that, too, thanks.
She had indicated to us that she got them from other people, and so we're, we're addressing that right now. So what had happened is Ms. Krieger was the person who put together the petition to have the smoke-free ordinance, and she was the one really kind of championing that. She, I believe, came to the first meeting that we had, and then did not come to the rest of the meetings, and then I believe she, I can't remember if she came to city council or not. Anyway, so we passed a smoking ordinance, and we've had issues with the individual. She's not very happy what we've put out, because it wasn't exactly what she had hoped or hoped to see. I had indicated that as a planning commission and city council, that we have to balance the needs of the entire community, and we have to think about everyone in the situation, and all of the possibilities, which is basically the first part of that email. She is not particularly happy with that, and so she wants the planning commission to open the ordinance up again and add prohibition of smoking within 20 feet of windows and doorways for all buildings in the city limits. And I don't know if the newer commissioners were here when we discussed it. We did discuss that as a possibility, and we, we mulled that over for, I believe, a meeting or two, they're in the notes, but my, the email that's on the second page is her original email to me and everyone else who is associated with that, and I put together that response. Frankly, I would not recommend amending an ordinance that has only been in place about six months, especially one that changes behavior. It's gonna take a while to get into it, and so my recommendations to her, if she would like to work with the city to do some educational things, to help us get grants to get more signage, or would help us in a, in a proactive way, we would do that, but I, I would not recommend the planning commission, and then the city council is not in favor at this time of opening that ordinance back up. So that's kind of where we're at. It is something that you can request as a future action item, if you would like to revisit it, and, and do that, that is under your purview, but that, that's basically why the email was shared, is she did request that all of her emails be shared with you from, from now on. So I'm going to do that.
In the pack, as a packet thing?
Yep, I will basically bring it in for public comment each time. So we, we do that, so if anyone does ask to share things with you that's not on the agenda, I would provide that in a public comment setting. We do get information every once in a while. For example, Vice Chair Finling had shared some concerns someone had about cannabis that I shared with the subcommittee, and so I, I brought that up. So I make a point of bringing up public comments to you guys, and making sure that you get those, and that we address them adequately. So that's why I wanted to bring that one up now, as we go into future agenda items.
Do you need us to, any, in somehow, some way officially say, we're not bringing it up again, we're not revisiting?
Um...
It's not an agenda item to do that, so we can't...
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Anyway, nice response.
Thank you.
What, I wasn't here when you did that ordinance, what does the ordinance say about smoking within a certain distance right now?
Sure, so there, there are a lot of pro, prohibitions of the ordinance, I can share it with you through email, too, if you wanna take a look at it. We basically said, in, in the case of restaurants, and I think that's the one that gets brought up a lot, is we said no smoking within or in 20 feet of a seated restaurant area. And so regardless of winter or summer, that holds. And so places like Seven Suns, for example, that means you really can't smoke on the sidewalk in front of it, because smoke drifts into that seated sidewalk, or seated restaurant area. We talked about that with Casa Ramos, as well as other places. I guess one of the examples she brings up is the Indian restaurant on the corner of Jessie and Chestnut. One of the things that we've discussed with the ordinance is that, you know, we can't go on private property and enforce this. This is not something that we can go and say, hey, you're standing on your front lawn smoking, you can't do that. That's incredibly difficult for us to do as a city government. And so one of the things she brings up is that Indian restaurant, and people smoke in front of that doorway. Well, that doorway is on private property. So as long as they're not within that, that restaurant area, I mean, that's really all we can do. I mean, and the other thing, too, is if a restaurant wants to choose to allow smoking in that seating area, there's not much we can really do about that. The idea of the whole ordinance was not enforcement, it was about behavioral changes, and at least giving business owners like Seven Suns the ability to say, hi, you cannot smoke within 20 feet of the seated restaurant area. It's a tool that they can use to help bring some compliance, but it's not something we use as, as a bully stick, if that makes sense. And so that was my point, is maybe we can try, instead of looking at it at the negative, that we need to start enforcing this really, really hardcore, and maybe start looking at some positives, and looking at some other models that work. So I have looked at some other cities, along with some other organizations, to, to look at educational materials and set up something that might be a little bit proactive about, you know, not just wagging a finger at smokers, but also going, hey, we're a smoke-free community because we value public health. If you want, here are some resources to quit smoking, or here are some resources that you can use.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I had an altercation in the Berryville parking lot.
Sure.
It wasn't an altercation, they yelled at me, though, because I told them it was a smoke-free property, and they proceeded to walk out into the middle of the street. And I had my little boy, and I just, I mean, they were smoking right next to my car, and I said, hey, this is a smoke-free property. I didn't proceed to say this is a smoke-free area in Mount Shasta, but they walked into the middle of the street to smoke. And I didn't wanna, you know, go further, but...
Yeah.
Can they smoke in the middle of the street?
Well, they complied, I mean, to a degree.
Techni, technically, no, the streets and sidewalks are encompassed in the district.
Better than in the parking lot.
Well...
At least you didn't sit there and have to argue.
Again...
I didn't, but they complied while they were yelling, would've been personally.
Yeah, and it, and it, and it is an unfortunate thing, and again, it's, it's a difficult thing to enforce and get people to change those types of behavior, and those types of people, I mean, you are, although the police department is not super happy with the amount of calls people get, people bring in for smoking, you are allowed to call in and say, you know, someone was smoking on property, I politely asked them to go somewhere to a designated area, they said no, started yelling at me, and walked into the street. I mean, walking into a street is pretty serious, they should respond to that.
I mean, I, I texted the store manager, and I said, hey, these people are camping out in the parking lot, and, and the guy, it was just...
It wasn't pleasant, but yeah.
I didn't, I didn't wanna get involved ahead with a child, it was not, I was just, yeah, I didn't know, I didn't wanna even push it because they walked into the street, but I also wasn't sure if that was allowed, like, can they go walk into the street and smoke?
Yeah, technically, we included streets and sidewalks in the ordinance.
I forgot, thank you.
But yeah, but yeah, it is something, it's gonna take time to start getting used to, it's gonna take time to enforce it properly, but again, revisiting and amending an ordinance that's only been in place for six months is not something I would advise any city to do, because you need to give us time to get used to those rulings and to do that. And I know one of the other things for the new commissioners we had talked about was phasing in the prohibition of smoking. So as opposed to doing a city-wide ban, we would start with a downtown special district, and as we start getting more compliance to, to build that out, and that was a little bit easier for our enforcement side of things as well. But again, it has been brought up with enforcement just as much as planning, and so we're working on it. And again, we're looking for creative ways to not have altercations like that.
So how about press releases? You know, get, get hit the paper again, you know, with the...
Yeah.
And let people know, I think that's a fairly low cost, and Rod, he's got broad leadership, and just let people know.
Yep.
In my experience, I'm pretty sure the people about smoking and camping in the parking lot do not read the Mount Shasta Herald.
But if the community...
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
You wouldn't be the only one saying something.
No, I don't, and I don't think that I am, clearly I'm not.
Yeah.
There's another.
Anyway, sorry, just for time and our backs.
Okay, what else do you have?
Can we bang the gap?
Just future agenda items, so to clarify something, for the special meeting on August 29th, it is not an approval or a disapproval of the conditional use permit yet, it is just determining the adequacy of the Sequa document. So we're doing an initial study and a mitigated negative deck, and we're in the draft process, we're receiving public input, that'll end this Friday, and then we will be sending out the final. I know this is a little bit different from what you guys have done in the past, you usually do the approval of the permit and the Sequa at the same time. Because this is such a controversial project, and the developer, you know, hasn't necessarily agreed to all of the mitigations yet, because we don't know what all of those are, we're just gonna do the adequacy of the Sequa first. So, this is the car wash and mini storage on Ski Village and North Mount Shasta Boulevard. So if you start hearing people talking about it, just, you know, I've been letting people know that it's just an environmental review, he has not filed some paperwork with me, and I need that before I can bring his permit to you, but he's gonna be doing a conditional use permit and architectural design guidelines. So that's what the August 29th meeting is.
We're doing, but we are doing architectural design guidelines?
Not a, that, he's going through the process, but we're going to do the environmental aspect and determine the adequacy of that first, since it is so controversial. Once you guys determine the adequacy, so if you say this is an adequate environmental document, and I get that final piece of paper from him, I will bring his permit forward, and we'll do it then, as a final approval of, of the designation.
At a separate, at that, at a separate meeting?
At a separate meeting. So the August 29th, the only thing you guys have to do, to do is determine if the initial study and mitigated negative deck are adequate or not. Does it meet the high, the high standards of Sequa?
Can you email us the initial study for Friday, so we can just start to, like, it's...
Well, we have the draft out now, there are gonna be some changes to the draft already, the draft's been out for a month, but I will, we actually extended it a week, too. We have the draft out, but we are, I will send you the final once we get that, 'cause it's not all complete.
Okay, so, 'cause I just would like to have as much time as possible.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, and we tried to program it, that's why we had requested the special meeting in August, rather than bringing it to this meeting, is they wanted extra time to address all of the comments, 'cause we have gotten a lot of comments. It might get pushed back again, if you do need more time, I can ask the consultant if they wanna push back that public hearing to add more time.
Who did?
Michael Baker. That was done way before I got here. So I basically came into this project, and they had already done the RFP and everything for the quotes and proposals, and they decided on Michael Baker, and I've inherited this project, and it isn't my favorite.
I think it was Scott.
Actually, Scott is no longer with Michael Baker.
And I think he did that.
Yeah.
He was, yeah, he left a lot.
Yeah, he did the quote. So, so just to educate you guys on what's happening there, I will go over that again, and send you guys an email about, you know, what is the procedure for that meeting. Belinda won't be here for that meeting.
Okay.
And there is gonna be a lot of public input.
Good.
So, it'll be engaging, anyway.
I don't think I'll be here either, but there's no, does it have to be a quorum?
There does have to be a quorum, so if we don't...
I did try to change, I initially told you that I would be here, and then I didn't realize.
So again, if we don't have a quorum, I will let our consultant know, too, and I can try and reschedule it.
I'll try to reschedule when I have.
Yeah, this is, I, I don't wanna schedule this for a regular meeting, 'cause it's gonna take a lot of time.[1690.12]
Yeah.
So, the quorum is four?
Yep. So...
And I, I have recused myself, so I can't be at it.
Okay.
There is a...
I'll try to reschedule.
And Belinda's gone, so...
So, one of the things I did check with Kath-, Kathy Wilson is that if you do come at the beginning, we can call you for roll call and then in the minutes, we'll say that you recuse yourself for the remainder of the meeting due to your conflict of interest. So, technically, I can't count you.
But then I couldn't be in the meeting.
Correct. You'd basically come for roll call and then you'd leave.
Would that help anything?
That might get us a quorum.
I could cover votes. No, I couldn't.
But if, don't we, if we don't have a quorum...
There's no vote.
There's no vote. It's not a vote. It's just a hearing.
Well, you would, you would vote, you would, you would vote on the adequacy of the Sequa document and your vote would be recorded as abstain due to conflict of interest.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go.
If not, we can reschedule it and give more time for, for that stuff.
Can both of you be there?
Okay.
I'm pretty sure. I think I will.
That's four, but if the quorum, you can be there, then it's okay.
The word, where are your...
I know, I know. I will just try to reschedule.
And you said Belinda will not be back?
She will not be back. So, I will let you know if I need you, Alan, for roll call. Like I said, I double-checked that with Kathy Wilson 'cause a bunch of people at first said they might not be able to make it, and so I was trying to figure out if it would work and then other people said they could make it then and then...
But if I, if I, I could be here for roll call, but if I can't hear and discuss it, I don't quite...
Like I said, your vote would just be considered as abstain because you're not voting on it.
Is there even a vote or is it just a hearing?
There will be a vote because we have to determine after...
Okay.
And so, that will take a motion.
Yeah. So, I will be sending this all in an email to you guys, and then for the new commissioners, I will arrange a Sequa thing because I am learning this process as well.
I should be involved in that because we haven't really had to do any Sequa.
Okay, I will.
Last two years.
They have, they have really good workshops. They had one in Chico a year ago or something.
Yeah, they have a, they have, I believe, a two-day seminar opening up at Davis in February next year, and if that's something you guys would wanna go to...
I would be interested if I can get a working.
I can add that to my budget for training.
I would ask you. I'm not going.
Okay. I will look into that. Anyway, just wanted to clarify that. I'm good.
All right, are we good?
Yeah.
All right, meeting is adjourned.
Woo-hoo. I hope that's the longest one that I have for you guys.
Thank you guys. Coming up.